Twenty five regular meeting, Bill Creek City Council's order at six P M. And we'll begin the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Holt's call?
Here.
Mayor Proton Vinyals?
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari?
Here.
Councilmember Steckler?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Paddock?
Present.
Can we have a motion to suspend the regular meeting for nine thirty, please?
Second.
All some favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And close in the extension, the motion carries unanimously. Would anyone like to address the council for audience communication? Anyone in chambers asked by name and city of residence if you'd like to identify?
I'm Scott Bensy, uh, state of Bill Creek. Uh, first, I just wanted to say it was great to be able to catch up with some of this meeting from last week on video. It was a little hard to hear all of you. Speak towards the microphone. That's great. Um, it was a little hard to know who was talking a couple of times. You know, I don't know, the better arrangement for what's going on. Um, and then I just wanted to say, case you're interested in resident feedback, I think that the camp like with the D R C C is a fantastic idea. I think I was going through my notes from several months of meetings that I've attended, where I actually put in my own notes, couldn't this go with the D R C C or would that work? You know, it just seems like it solved a whole lot of different problems, um, kickstarting development here and getting some funding for a building there, getting some staff on site for recreational programs that could happen there. Um, I also think you can, I want to lean in, um, take advantage of the topography and get a much bigger building without going as vertical as it may seem. So hopefully, I just can't wait to see a concept of fitting all those things into a building on that space. I think it's fantastic, and I know you guys are moving on, but we need to last week to see.
Is anyone else in chambers? Here. Uh, do not see any members of the public online, so we'll move into our procedure planning retreat and I will come on deck. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, um, welcome to night two. Um, as, uh, as promised, tonight is all about financial viability. So, uh, what I thought I would do is give, um, just a, a quick recapture of what's in your packets, just in case you want to refer to it. Uh, and then we'll do a quick agenda review and then I'll help bring you open comments. So just logistically as I, we can see Sean's online. Uh, Sean, for, uh, as we go through the slides, uh, you're going to be behind the screen. And so Leah is watching for you if you have any comments. And then once we get to the discussion, we'll, we'll be able to pull you up on the screen side of everything.
Thank you.
So, um, just in the packet, a couple of things that, uh, I wanted to call your attention to after we get through the front. As I did update the, the slides when we got to the priority discussion, so around the South Town Center, uh, updated the, the conversation, uh, to reflect the three year outcomes that we discussed. And then more importantly, I captured the twenty five actions that we identified. Going to be important as we get to the end of the evening, because as, after the financial viability conversation, we'll come back and just take a gut check across the actions that we identified for South Town Center, D R C C, and tonight, financial viability. Check in with staff to make sure we're, we're good on, or if we have any issues. That way we'll walk out with, uh, with a good sense of this is actually what's on the plate. So these are the, these are the, um, actions that we identified around South Town Center, uh, with the, uh, the, the conversation around guiding decision rules to really focus this, uh, area around financial viability. But we want to start looking at the, the use of this land through the lens of financial viability. And then, uh, ongoing actions captured there as well. Uh, in terms of D R C C, the three year outcomes, uh, guiding principles, conversation around that we should be looking at that property really from a community perspective, that I thought you did a really nice job of validating, uh, the guiding principles around it being a significant asset, as well as the multipurpose concept, accommodating multiple types of uses, and adding that really what we're looking for here is to bring the community together. Vince used the word certainly community. Uh, I think John raised gathering space and concept, uh, but really have, have that facility be a, a, a community gathering vehicle with the big idea of can it become a civic center? And we'll move through all lots of that. In terms of the R C C activities that are actions that we defined for twenty twenty five, uh, it's really ground laying work, um, in terms of feasibility studies around moving City Hall there, uh, do some, um, view of whether public quarters could be there, uh, understanding whether any action will be taken on this. And then really coming up with a set of the best options, including the concepts of what, what would we do? And then that's where we paused, we did a to be continued, uh, because we needed to get to tonight's discussion to see what's on the plate for financial viability. And then we'll come back and just make sure that we're all clear on, on what actions are, are being done twenty five, twenty five, or, or whether there's any trade off from that. That makes sense? Like that thirty second recap that we made of the show. Okay, so that brings us to, uh, tonight. And so, uh, I did a little bit of a modification on the agenda tonight. We'll have any open comments. And then the front, the front part of the agenda is similar, that before we start getting into conversations around all the ideas around financial viability, because my idea for tonight is actually what we want to try to build as a hypothesis, for what is going to make the city financially viable. So we want to start framing, what does that hypothesis look like? And to me, what that means is we have to start looking at the levers. What are all the levers that are available to us? Because right now, there are nine different levers that I came up with, and we're just throwing out ideas. We have to start talking about which ones we think have the most impact on the city, both from a dollar perspective and a timing perspective, and then start talking about what do we need to know? So what, what is it that we need to know to, to bring information in front of you so you could actually make decisions? And so that's where we're going to go tonight. We're going to go through those levers and talk about each of them. And I know some of you have some ideas, um, but the thing that I would say is context is tonight is not the decision making night. Won't be able to make decisions about any of these levers, except to say, which of these do we think we should pursue and what information should we direct staff to go guess? So that we can actually, uh, um, bring that information and, and talk about decisions. Okay, so, three sections of the conversation. To get into that, what I'm recommending is we have to start with what does financial viability mean? Because we've been throwing around this terminology, but I want to make sure we have a, a, a common definition. So we're going to start there. Then, uh, we're going to go through each of the levers that we've identified and we're going to discuss them. So we'll go through each one, discuss it, uh, then take a quick break. After the break, we'll come back and we'll actually specify the priorities. So that I'm going to ask all of you, uh, after we've gone through the, the discussion, to, to basically make your prioritization, what do you think are the top three? We'll reflect on that, and then effectively out of that, we'll decide which ones we're going to pursue. And then we'll have a final discussion around it of what do we need to know? So around those that we're going to pursue, what specific information do we need to know? Uh, so that we can add that to the action list for staff. Then effectively, at the very end of the night, we'll look at all the actions and make sure we're okay. That's the grand plan. Pretty okay with that? Um, you go. Great. Mayor, did you have any open comments for tonight?
Not really. I thought it was a productive discussion last week, and I look forward to productive discussions when we get into it.
Mayor Proten?
Good, thank you.
Martin, I know you do.
Yeah, just a few things that, um, after that first retreat, I think it went really, really well. Uh, we were differing up briefly with annexation, and I know we held that off until this retreat. Jeff had a chance to, to kind of ponder with, over these three different strategic priorities. And, uh, we came to consensus that along with the annexation, and I know we're going to be discussing that today, that, uh, we believe that we could probably, in some form, work on all three projects at the same time. But it all depends on how council wants to stage these projects, um, moving forward. That could mean on the annexation piece of it, possibly starting off, for example, the financial analysis. We get green on, um, on the revenue side of, kind of what the cost would be, not considering, for example, groundwater, things that are underground. But we used to start and see if we want to move in that direction. So just an example, so I get super presumptuous on, on, council wants to move forward on that, but, um, if we just take it in those steps, uh, we believe that we could take care of all of it, uh, or start to move forward with each project. And that would all depend also, not just staging, but possibly, uh, our capacity as well, like we've always, like we have been discussing, and so, uh, we're there, we need to move resources around internally, have bigger management analysts and F P C manager focus on a few things that could be more contractual and then moving things administratively forward and, uh, for limited employees to help out with Jeff's team, but there could be, we need to kind of consider the capacity as well. But I'll hand it back over to.
Okay, so as we head into the first conversation, Sean, um, the women of the jest is I'm going to pull up slides. Do you, do you have your packet handy in front of you for tonight?
Yes, yes, I do.
So, um, I'm going to pull up the slide just to make sure you know where we're at. Uh, and then, uh, and then I'll ask Leah to pull down the slide so we can, that's the discussions and that way, um, that way you'll be able to make sure you're tracking. Okay, so this, this next place, as we get into financial viability, I want to make sure we're, we all are talking about the same thing when we're saying that, those words. So that as we go into discussion, we start looking at options, we actually have a common lens. So I thought it would be good to start with the question, that just simply is what does financial viability mean? And what I'm looking for here is two outcomes. One is a, a simple draft definition statement, and I gave you one to kick, kick it off, that it may be something like, our recurring revenue sources are greater than our anticipating operating expenses. That's our definition of financial viability. I'm not saying that's right, just as an example. So once we come to that draft statement, then what I'm going to ask us to do is, what, what are the, what's the evidence? Or what are the outcomes that we're looking for that tells us that we're there? So that could be, we enter the next biennial budget with this input, or the next biennial budget does create financial, whatever, whatever that outcome is, the tangible marker that we're going to look for, basically to say, great, that's the next step we got there. And then we'll start looking at all the levers. So, so let's start with that first statement, uh, just in terms of what, what we mean by financial viability. And Leah, you can go ahead and pull down the slide right now so that we can see Sean. So, any thoughts? What would be a simple draft definition that we could use? Doesn't have to be perfect, but let's, let's have a hypothesis. Brian?
Couple of comments. I think this should focus on the general fund, because we have limits on what we can do raising funds for the general fund. We don't have options of taxing districts or things like that to raise funds for that. I think we would need to also incorporate language that says we're not using the general fund revenues to fund non-general fund activities, because we could have revenues exceeding expenses, but if we're using those revenues to fund transportation projects, park projects, we're still in the same position with the general fund as we are today. And the last component that I'd suggest we consider incorporating maintaining some agreed level of general fund reserve.
Other thoughts?
I have it. Well, I, I Googled your, um, your question, and, and one of the responses that came back of several, I think is significantly, and it basically kind of puts it in a nutshell. It's a, a judgment of the ability of an organization to meet ongoing financial obligations with an additional margin of comfort to support future investment.
Say that one more time, then?
Yeah, it says, um, the ability of a, we'll say, organization or city to meet the ongoing financial obligations. And the reason I, I'm bringing up this one is because the next sentence kind of really says it all, with an additional margin of comfort to support future investment. So I could take credit, but aye.
So just to point out, there's two things going on here. You may find a draft definitional statement that we all feel good about, great, that feels... And then there may be some guiding principles or parameters that, that we, that we capture as well, and that's okay. So let's, let's capture both. So, uh, let's, let's just keep, let, let, any other thoughts? They're in response or additive? And then it's only Googled, you can use chat G P T.
I make a comment. I like where we're going very much with these statements. Uh, it's interesting, when I met with the city of Everett and their director of economic development, interesting how they focused on economic development being, and we talked about this vaguely in our session, you know, the businesses in the city, the economic viability of those businesses, that's your focus. And I, I've always wondered, you know, is that really the best focus for us? And this seems to be, you know, a clearer mission of, but I, I just found that interesting. And he mentioned to me this is quite, it's a common, I guess, economic development focuses on the businesses within the entity, uh, and that if business is successful, your city will be successful. I don't know if I necessarily agree with that, I thought.
And we'll, and we'll have that as one of our levers, yeah, but there are any other...
I like it as a lever, not as a driver, yeah.
I don't know where I'm going with this. I think of viability, I think of, what does it mean to sustain, driving operations, I would say. So, with that, I'm kind of taking it a little bit of, of a higher level, maybe looking down. Think of maybe like pillars or, uh, where the, or key thing, I think of, what are the resources that are necessary? What is the funding necessary? That's resources, I mean, equipment and staffing. In order to meet the, the goals that our community has of us. Around those lines, I think, uh, that's what I think of first before I start thinking about the revenue and the expenditures and so forth, but.
The, the revenue, needing to fill, to have the revenues that will maintain the level of service that is expected. There's got to be a fancy word to say that, but the...
One of the things that Martin raised in this is that there's a temporal element that he's raising and being able to look forward. And this is, we know that there is a, a budget, budget issue coming. There's a temporal aspect to that. There's a, a light temporal aspect of the sustainability of what you're doing over time adds to inflation, through other things that can happen. So when we get to those levers, I'm actually going to ask you to think both in terms of impact and timing. Some of the levers may take a long time to take root, but have the impact. Some of the, some of the levers may have shorter term impacts, so we're going to have to take that into account as we work.
Rob, Councilmember Paddock has a comment.
I actually think Rob just, uh, addressed it, but I'll, I'll just ask it again, just in case, was if, if there, if we should put some sort of time constraint on this, meaning a near term viability and a long term viability, and what the definitions of those two would be?
Then, let's, let's maybe separate those for a second. Does anybody have any thoughts around the short term timing requirement of what we come up with in this discussion?
For the short term, I would say similar to actually what you had as the, the example, that we need to be making sure that the revenue sources coming in are greater than the, um, than what's going out. And tying that in with what the mayor's saying about the general funds, because the general funds where we're talking about, because the other funds are funded differently.
Everybody agree with that, for a short term?
I feel like you need to get there before you can start talking about having extra.
Kind of argument, if you look at little perturbations in your revenue stream or your expenses and manage to those, you can manage yourself in denial existence by, by whipsawing yourself. So you've got to have a, I think there's got to be, don't over emphasize the short term and say, oh, all of a sudden we're half million bucks short, let's turn, let's fire a bunch of people, let's quit a bunch of projects, and then find out the next year we're in good shape again. We kind of went through that for COVID. We had this big fear that, oh my God, guy's going to fall, we're going to be out of money. We made some drastic changes that took us quite a bit of time to recover from. So I would say, don't be too quick on the draw in the short term. Now, I don't know how you interpret that, but I think just be carefully managed just by the...
What you're leading to, Mike, but let's, is a both, is a both and. So this is the beginning part of it. And, and I think what you're saying here, when we're saying short term, is that in any biennial, that's the, that's the timeframe that you're, you're looking at, that in any biennial, this is now, sorry, I call it table state. It's foundational. This, this is a must have, and then we can start talking about the long term. I'm saying that as a statement, that resonates, I think.
Yeah, feasibility for term.
When I look at this, it's like, short term is a gap. We know what the gap is. We know that we're projected to have a shortfall. You need to find increased revenue streams to accomplish that shortfall. That's short term. Long term, we know, which we have seen in the last few years of COVID and other reasons, is the increase in the cost to us. So you might get a nice, if you fill the gap, you plug the hole in the boat. Uh, but now you know that going forward, that's not going to be enough. We need to have increased graduated, available revenue streams or opportunities. Since the cost, staff needs more money, uh, costs more to buy paper and pens and everything else, costs are going to go up. So it's, it's long term is the graduation and availability, short term is being the gap.
Okay, so let's talk, let's talk about that long term. What, what does financial viability mean then beyond this, this, this just next biennial? Or this next period of filling the gap and getting stable?
We have strategy that is, the income is more than publication.
So kind of, what I heard there is there's a sustainable strategy in your head. Where income effectively pays expenses under all scenarios.
You're good. Um, so, I guess, it's, it's about the initial conversation that we were just having. I, after hearing the short term versus the long term, um, and that question, I think it should just be one, the, the larger, we should be thinking long term and choosing the strategies for it, so I don't see it as two different ones. I really appreciate your, um, simple, the definition that you provided, thinking through what, uh, Councilmember Cavallari shared about that. I think his phrasing was, um, um, the margin of comfort. So I, uh, in terms of definition that we're talking about, I liked everything that you had of the, you know, recurring revenue sources meeting, um, or, you know, there's something about our greater than anticipated ongoing, what's, uh, expenses, but I had the, to combine it with meeting like residents, customer, I had residents initially, then maybe it's customer, but customer expectations while continue growing at the desired rate, um, or something along those, that it could be continue growing at the desired rate while still meeting customer expectations. So it's a, I like, because at first I didn't, the customer expectations and the, uh, margin of comfort, I wasn't sure if that was a lever, right, when we were looking at this? Um, and then your definition that you provided, just as an example, was like a strong starting point, or it, it seems like a bunch of us are saying it needs to be included there.
Melissa, I heard three things in there. I haven't been relying on that. So there's the, there's the recurring revenues over, over costs.
Yes.
With the margin of comfort.
Right.
For additional investments. With the notion that we're meeting the priorities and needs of the community.
Yes.
With the notion that we've anticipated the ability to grow.
Right. So I think my anticipated growth is actually a little bit of a replacement of that, um, margin, uh, which I'm finding is margin of investment, but it feels like that's what, that's going to that, margin of investment is our future. Sometimes growth might immediately make people think like, oh, we're getting bigger and bigger, but it's more just how in the city we grow to the challenge of what are the things that we need? So that's where I was thinking of the growth aspect, but I really like the idea, because I think, um, Mayor Proson said something about, also about meaning like maintenance and things like that. So that's where I think that resident expectation, um, should be included in that as part of the viability, so yeah.
I think what complicates it for me a little bit is that technically we're operating currently, our, our budget's balanced, but we're already looking toward the red, toward the future. So we don't have a lot of room for error here. Like, we, we can't just, um, decide to do something and then have it not go, go our way a hundred percent. So I, I, I guess, I guess my, my thought on it is that we, we don't have a lot, we, we really have to be right almost a hundred percent of the times, given our margin of error in the city with finances, is, is how I look at it. And a city our size, there's just, you know, Boeing's not building a, a fifth runway. It's, it's the realization of, of how big you are. So that's one of the, as, as we do these exercises, it's the, it's the recurring theme that keeps playing back in my head, and I'm not trying to play Debbie Downer, I'm, I'm just, that really has to be like at the end of, of every sentence, is that, that we, we do have to exercise caution. It's cool to dream big and talk about all that stuff, but, um, I'll just, I'll just leave it there. I, that, that, that's my, that's, that's my one worry, is that we have very little room to be wrong, a city our size.
That's always been our challenge. The revenues are going up at a constant rate, the revenues fluctuate. I wonder if we need to establish a baseline for the size of the city to determine what levers. Because, I mean, at some point, our only choice is going to be to cut. And that means cutting the level of service. So I wonder if there needs to be an agreement on what the appropriate staffing level size of the city is, that kind of like the break even point for, for meeting the level of service. If we go below that level, we're not going to meet the level of service. And I think that will help frame the discussion on which levers we, we might utilize. As we've been talking about it, the kind of the way I penciled it out, or the way I would state it is, may... state it is maintain Mill Creek's long-term financial viability, the city's general fund revenues, one, should exceed estimated general fund expenses, anticipated general fund expenses. Two, are sufficient to maintain a specified reserve level with enough funds for future investments. And three are not used to subsidize non-general fund expenses. That's the way I think about it.
So maybe in terms of what we mean by viability, I mean, that's why we're discussing this.
Maybe viability also includes ways that we can be innovative or creative to see different opportunities. And is that viable? Are, are opportunities viable too? Is it only what we see tangibly now? Is that what's viable? Or are we seeing opportunities as viable as well?
That, that's my question, Mike. If we only have one perspective, then we know where we're going, right? If we have both, then maybe we have, we can have more of a discussion so that we could be creative to see, um, the best solution of how to move forward.
I think we get into a little bit of what is it that we're talking about, that how, how do we maneuver, get there, which is part of that creativity. So, so let me come back, Brian. Let me, so do you want to, three, one more time?
One is that the general fund revenue should exceed anticipated general fund expenses. Two, general fund revenues are sufficient to maintain a specified reserve level with enough funds for strategic future investments. Three, are not used to subsidize non-general fund expenses.
What expenses would fall into the, um, non-general fund expenses?
We could have more money coming in than we're spending, but choose to use all that money to do road projects or, or park projects that we hadn't budgeted and otherwise we'd be using refunds for. So to say that we're just going to have revenues exceeding expenses, we've also got to have a commitment that we want to maintain those for the general fund expenses, otherwise we're going to be in the same position we are today.
What about buying property? What would that fall?
In my mind, what the general fund reserves for, if we maintain it healthy, that's where we use the, that's where we got the funds to buy the church property.
So, so I heard in different languages, here's, here's the margin for investment that is invented. So you've got the basic that I think we're all agreeing to, that fundamentally, we've got to make sure we have a picture for recurring revenues.
There's two components to the reserve. It's the rainy day fund, which that's the 15% recurring policy, plus something on top of that, like Vince is saying, for strategic opportunities. I think we need to have a discussion of what that level is, do we have enough for both?
And, and I think to your point, uh, about the, maybe the little bit extra in reserves is, that's what I've always believed as well, is that that's, it is for those opportunities that arise when we have a chance to buy a church property and whatnot, because we're invest, we're, we're in reinvesting back into the city. So it's, it's, it's not like it's a gamble, right? We're, we're going to be okay with it. All it does is present more opportunities and put our money to work. So I think the mayor has succinctly put it.
And, and does this cover the kind of sustainability part of it, the recurring part of it? Or do we need one more thing there that captures the ongoing work?
I'm not sure if there's, this is in the, maybe, that, that we should be having excesses in reserve above this required reserve for sale aside for property. Right? There might be, but I'm not sure that there is an agreement.
It's not limited to buying property, it's just having for strategic opportunities. Buying property is one, strategic opportunity could be useful. It could be investing in the sub area, in the pond improvements, or stormwater, street improvements, sub area.
Right. And, and I think the theme that I'm hearing is, is we're, we're not going to get to like, what should this level be? Or, but thematically, I want to make sure that we're just all aligned, that there is a base level of revenue exceeding. There's a second level which says, hey, we should have some margin. We should, we should have some cushion above that for investments, for other things that come up, et cetera. And then we should have some parameters around general fund not being able to move. That's what I'm hearing.
Just for my own thinking, is it possible, when we talk about the reserve fund, we can just, kind of just think of another word for the, there's two parts, right? There's the like backup rainy day fund, and then there's an extra pot of money that is maybe for spending other stuff. I'm just thinking maybe, maybe we'll call one reserve and maybe call one like, just a different name, just because it's, by them having the same name, it's all the cash reserve that we need. What, what kind of reserve?
That's a great point. My first point, I specifically did not limit it to the biennial, but that's kind of what my thinking was, is each biennial we need to have revenues exceeding the expenses. I would say add to the, the, the number two, we're maintaining a certain level of general fund, but I think what we need to maybe consider incorporating the third point, so this route, is the general fund not used to subsidize either non-general fund expenses or general fund expenses. Cause that's what is happening with this budget, is we dipped into that reserve to fund general fund expenses. And I don't think any of us really want to be in that position. We want to have enough revenues, but we're maintaining those reserve funds for future strategic investments rather than using them to subsidize our, uh, given by any of our general fund expenses.
So if number one is true, doesn't that take care of it though?
Not necessarily, because if we have, again, um, Debbie. Trying to think back to this budget, did our general funds exceed our general fund expenses? Taking with, if we took out the portion of the general fund reserve that we used to balance the budget? It did, yeah. Not, yeah.
But may I, they all told us that if we just focus on the general fund and not like the street fund or these other non-general funds, and we don't look at their viability as well, the general fund will end up funding those, right? For instance, our street fund does not have sufficient revenue, yet we have a lot of onboard operations, operating costs in there, for instance, in the street life. So we also have to look at, we have to make sure those are viable, so that the general fund doesn't have to subsidize them.
That gets to Brian with the, very much. Effectively, all the funds are viable in a way the general fund is not subsidizing.
Yes. And probably the reason for, I think, thinking of it that way is there are different levers that can solve those problems that aren't available for the general fund.
Heather, hand up.
I don't know if I, I would be on board with creating different buckets of reserves. I, I like, that's what Jeff alluded to a second ago, that this is the mandatory minimum we're supposed to have, and this is the fluff. I, I think what would happen is, is it would just create opportunities for, for use and instead of its, its intended purpose is of being reserves. Uh, when, when the mayor was talking about when a property purchase comes up that just so happens because our reserves were robust, right? We didn't have to wait, we didn't have to search for mechanisms to fund it. We just, we just immediately said, hey, this is a great use of, of what we've saved up for. So I don't, I don't want to parse it out and piece it out, the minimums and, for me personally.
I would also recommend that tonight is the night, tonight to be debating the mechanisms, how we do this, because it'll take us down. I want to make sure thematically you're all on the same page in terms of the commitment that we're going to right the ship here around these principles. And then let's start digging into the levers of how do we act, how could we actually do that so that get you to the decision? Then, then I think you could appropriately come back and start talking.
And two remaining, Wayne, you're just going to focus on general fund? You just set the ground or is that what you're talking about?
So I captured Connie that all, it's a part of this number three, is all funds are viable such that the general fund is not subsidized as a, as a guideline. And what we're doing with the general fund, for example, when we have, um, sinkholes and deferred maintenance for years, it now has to be taken into account and can't, um, fund the, the existing, these existing types of resources that we have. So part of our budget problem was that general fund also had to subsidize or pay for some additional expenses. So I think I see where, where you're, where you're going at is, um, and I'm still, after nine years, looking in my head around government funding and how all these different buckets, but, um, the general fund is the standard operating fund that we run on. And then there are other funds that are just to fund certain city oriented type of costs. And they, they get their revenues from other sources the general fund can't get revenues from, like, uh, taxes or something like that. That can never be used to fund the general fund, but it can help us with, with round problems, uh, that type of thing. So I think what we're trying to do here is get a, get a clarification as we move forward with financial viability. The general fund should not be subsidizing potential increased expenditures. If we have the, the additional, additional expenditures to our city that are like street costs, then we should probably come up with a different way to pay for those rather than the general fund. I'm, I'm not saying that's what I think is, I think it's kind of the, is that there's, there's a background conversation, there's a foreground conversation. I think the background conversation is, a lot of our increased expenditures are based on, uh, expenses that normally would be covered by other funds. But we really control the general fund, not them. So, so the thing about tonight is what I would, tonight's not about rulemaking or it, it really needs our intention statement. And so now we've got to bear this out, but, but the intention I think is you're moving to a place where it's that positive, that cushion in the reserve, and effectively you're not subsidized across. That's the intention. Statistically, there may be times where, where it's required. I think the conclusion out of this that you've come to is this is a revenue, got a revenue issue, that now we've got to talk about revenue sources and what are the potential revenue sources bring into this, because right now, the, the sustainability of this is effectively expenses around stripping revenues over time. Is that, is that here? It was trending to the city employees, a room that, um, where, where, where they're concerned about how are we going to fund additional street costs in our city? And that's part of their economic viability, their heads. And if we go with this number three, which I understand it, it totally makes sense, but then is, is that taking care of one of the, uh, potential problems we're looking ahead for us?
I think you're getting down to the levers.
Okay. Yeah, maybe I am. I'm always trying to clarify and get the levers, yeah. So, so, uh, really what I'm looking for here is eighty percent, you know, is that eighty percent, yes, we feel like we're, we're, we know what we're trying to solve here and thematically, we're, we're feeling aligned in terms of what we're trying to do. Is everybody feeling pretty aligned in terms of this discussion of yes, this is a pretty good hypothesis of what we're trying to do, that now we can start unearthing the levers and start, start talking about them?
See, if we're talking about the overall, then yes, but I still have concerns about, um, the extra, the extra reserve fund, how, how adding to that, because, and how high that should be parameters, um, that would carry out.
Yeah, so don't, don't, don't get caught up in the, how big.
I'm not comfortable with those areas.
That's why I had in my, it's not up there, but I said an agreed level. I wasn't saying what that would be, I was saying the council needs to stay upon what that level is.
And it does give you the scalability that, that, that level of reserves. Yeah, because the council sets the reserve, and if expenses are going like this, and we can't have revenues to flat because our expenses are going up, the reserve, potential size of the reserve or use of the reserve can be that lever that we pull to cover those additional expenses down the road. But if we don't create anything new, or don't prepare any streets, or, you know, what, what other expenses do we have to keep doors open, lights on?
So, and if we succeed at this, revenues will exceed the expenses, and that general fund is going to grow regardless of what level, level we set it at.
So here's one of the themes, Stephanie, that in, in every business that I work with, regardless of whether it's municipal, nonprofit profit, when you go into a growth period where you are investing, effectively you are making the decision that you are forward investing. And in that decision, you have to look, look at how are we setting aside money to do that, because you're, you're investing for, so effectively, that's what I hear in those conversations. You have to have a conversation that says, we're looking forward as well as just this, this current period of being okay, and we're making a determination of an agreed level of what we're going to need, so that we can cover those investments and whatever else comes up. That's the biggest part of the conversation. I think current need, but also looking forward as well. That's what you want to think about, we're not talking about levers, that's, that's something I think we all can agree on.
The way it's framed, I think it encompasses that, because our levers are going to change. If our, if our revenues aren't exceeding, so we're having to consider using the general funds to subsidize, then we've got to make decisions on which levers to use. If they're, or accomplishing the first goal and that general fund is growing, then we're either not needing the levers, or we're using the leverage for different purposes.
And to add on to that, you're going to bind in these levers, some levers may have smaller impacts, but they're short-term. Some levers may have bigger impact, but it takes longer for them to ramp, and you're going to have to have a view of how they all piece together to kind of move through this past period. And you've got an expense, an added expense providing no additional added revenue now, but it's critical to our future down the road, like this thing. Okay, so great. I didn't, I didn't mean this to be a wordsmithing exercise, so on purpose, I'm stopping us short of that, uh, so that thematically, we're, we're in, we're circling around the right target. So what I'm proposing is I think it's the appropriate time that we, let's go through all the levers, make sure we all understand each of the levers. I know some of you have ideas and discussions around some of them. Some of them are well-known and we won't have to spend as much time, but what I've tried to do is capture all the main levers that I've heard in the conversation of what is, what could we push on or pull on to actually help this financial picture? Break revenues, reduce expenditures. So we're going to break this into two parts. The first section, we're going to go through each of the levers and just make sure we have a discussion around them, so that, so that we understand them. Then the second part is we'll actually step back and prioritize. So each of you will be on the hook for taking that point of view. So in your packet, I captured the nine that I came up with, I have them up here. Don, you following okay with us? Okay, so first lever is just existing taxes. So obviously that one's well-known, you've got property taxes, you've got sales taxes, you could always pull those levers. In this budget cycle, several of you had concerns with that. So, um, and what I heard from you thematically, by the way, wasn't a, we're anti, it was, hey, this shouldn't just be the default, is what I heard. There's a lot of levers on the page here that we should be looking at and we should have a holistic view. So it is a lever, it's, it's on, it's on the page, it could be pulled, uh, but there's lots of other things to consider. The second thing is new taxes. Uh, there's a few things I included under here. Uh, there's the idea of a new taxing district. Uh, the utility tax is, uh, is something that's come up. Um, the concept of another tax. And I just give a representative example here that we talked through the process around potentially a clean and safe tax, tax that the community would buy in to, uh, to, uh, sustain the police and, and, and the well-maintained. Third lever is operational cuts. That's something that we could do. You've been, uh, that is a little bit. is a little bit antipetical because of the whole conversation you've been talking about, which is rate maintaining and raising the standards as well as doing other things for the city. But it is it is a lever. It's on the page. The fourth is attraction of new businesses. So that's not only bringing new businesses to the city, but it really breaks into two two factors. One is still the existing capacity, so any capacity you have in the city, fill it. And the second is potentially expand capacity, but Jeff is. Yeah.
Rob, just maybe just to put this out there, another possibility is also debt, like bonding measures and capital abilities, things of that nature. So I think it's a worthwhile conversation to have.
Great. And exactly the question I'm going to ask as I go through these is have I missed have we missed any? And then what we're going to do is we'll come back and we'll actually go through each one and discuss it.
So a clean and safe tax would cover would cover the police and?
I'm not I'm not putting any specificity around what it would be. I'm just saying we could have a new you could create a new tax, and that's an example. Yeah, Brian?
Really, we don't need to do this tonight, but at some point, I think we really need to think about making a graph. And on the horizontal axis is time, and we mark on there the time when we're projected to have our expenses exceed our revenues. The vertical axis would be amount of dollars, financial impact you'd raise. So for each of these, you're able to identify when you could anticipate it having a positive revenue impact on the city and the range of what that financial impact could be. Because I think that's going to inform decisions in the long term and the short term.
Yep. And as we as we dive into the different ideas and start quantifying what they could be, it's actually a very cool chart that I've seen that I call it a waterfall chart. But basically, if you're here and it shows the gap in timing of where you're going to be, effectively, it can show the measures and how they add up of what you're doing at each time trying to get there as a representative. So it's very similar, Brian, to it. But that's on what what are you actually taking decisions to go to? Okay. Number five, South Town Center. Certainly, you've already started move forward. There's an economic impact analysis coming. There is the potential that, you know, you may need finance, you may need some assumptions on that earlier. So one of the things, if we were sitting in a business, we would be ordering one of our analysts, just go do a model for me. Let's not wait for the economic impact analysis six months from now. Let's at least know our assumptions of what we need to do for us in terms of tax assets. That's one of the things we could do very quickly to come up with some some assumptions there. Okay, number six, annexation. We'll dive into that. Number seven, the new potentially new fee based services that we would come up with. Number eight, let's go attract a bunch of people to the city, which is either just residents moving in or higher density. And then number nine, I captured DRCC as a potential. But to be perfectly honest, thematically for most of you, there isn't high expectation that DRCC would actually be a lever for financial viability. It's a different conversation. So I captured it just to make sure. So those are all the ones that I've heard in the conversation. So Vince, add a debt, a bond measure. Before we start jumping into all of them, are there any others, any other big levers that we missed, just to have a full full list?
In a way, you said this with increased population, but making that tourist destination kind of touched on it over here with the various becoming their retail, maybe in place to come visit, ooh, cool place, bringing in bringing in more people is basically for lifters. That's annexation. You know, kind of more dirt stuff for these apartments we want to talk about building. But but how could we 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 there was a time when we had a very well thought out tourism plan for the city of Mill Creek. How we would reach them, what we would market to them, how we'd advertise, what we could expect, much money could we get from them?
I'm going to capture it. As we get in, there's a little bit of risk of double counting in some of these methods.
Yeah, it is.
We'll we'll work that out. Armin?
So we need to, as part of the discussion, segregate the levers that are applicable to the general fund and the levers that are applicable to specific objects?
Good point.
We can do that. We can just talk about.
Yeah, let's. What did you how do you phrase it? Interlocal? Okay. Any other big levers that we're missing? Yeah, Mike?
We've got in new fee based services, but looking at making our fees match, you know, better line up, increasing our fees for the service we provide today, better better match between what we collect for what we provide now. We know when the last time we wasn't that long.
Before 2019, before I was working on that.
So it's been a while.
We haven't done a couple of.
Okay, some of our fees haven't been increased since the administration.
True.
Their their work in our enforcement hasn't exactly been.
Well, it's not enforcement. It's just building permits and the activities that we've provided.
But I think Connie's pointing out there's a we could go aggressively at fines. You could say, let's go fine everybody who has a violation instead of encouraging them to clean up their act. Our attitude has been clear up their act. We don't really care about fines.
Hey, somebody was out there giving tickets to people that had that had their cars out there with a tag to the day because it was on Facebook.
They're framing more towards.
Do you add that that's on code enforcement?
Well, it's kind of new fee based services. I think there's there's fines. We could go at fines more aggressively. There are there are cities that that go heavy on red light cameras and go three miles an hour over the speed limit. You're going to take it up. That's not in this list. That is something we could do. Cities do that.
So let me just let me call us to maybe way off base. However, we could spend all night talking about things that may get us moved and feel this much. And I think that's what we're here to do then. So there may be ideas out there. But if they're not measurable at this point, let's focus on those. Because some of these, let's just do them anyway. We can look at them. But but let's make sure we get on the page the ones that can actually move. Plus, you had your hand up.
Oh, it was just in support of Director Todd's point, just because we have increase in existing taxes and then we had new taxes. So it makes sense for like for lining up new fee based services or code enforcement or increase in matching or whatever it was. That seems to make sense to me. I I did have a just a general comment because we were talking about tourism and then at least in this packet, it says like destination for visitors and and this says twice destination visitors. And while I don't know if it's a lever, so I guess that's more of a question for me. There's something like whenever I see stuff like that, I'm I don't want residents to leave the city of Mill Creek for the services they need, right? So there's something to that of keeping residents to find what they're looking to have the things that residents need that they would stay inside. So it's I guess what I'm trying to say, it seems like there's a lot of language about getting other people to come here. But I want to make sure we're also thinking, we want residents to stay here to use these businesses instead of constantly going to Alderwood or Woodinville or, you know, those other areas for restaurants or dining. There's some type of language. And that just might be when you say South Town Center, you have it as a bullet there. So it just it it maybe it's not writing anything down. It's just the acknowledgement that when we say South Center as a destination for visitors. And residents. And residents, like that's it, yeah.
And they go with both.
And they go into both. Yeah, like you have it here. But I just wanted to acknowledge because it says for visitors, but there's not a reference to.
It's reducing leakage.
Yeah, and Melissa rightly to be we need to keep also to keeping people here by making keeping the things that will keep them here and and not extending them out somewhere else.
So just just along the same lines of what Director Todd and Kate just spoke of, I assume what Director Todd meant was that to charge the appropriate amount for fees for for permits like Mary said and 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 other uses that, you know, passports and printing out different halls in the city and those types of things. I don't want to use where it says code enforcement as a fundraising mechanism. I I I want to stay away from that. I I don't think that is part of our vision of of trying to humble the public to cover our any gap we have in a budget. So I want to make sure that that we're not moving in that direction that having that dialogue that what Director Todd was saying was was to get with 2025 and what they're charging these days and what inflation has done to this, what we charged during the Clinton administration. So I think that's where that's what I interpret. They're not more aggressive code enforcement. You know what I mean?
So and by the way, it's the cheat sheet at the end. I'm going to ask you for what three you think are the most compelling to. We're turning around. And this is a financial viability conversation. So there's a lot of other stuff at play in each of these that you're going to have to weigh through. But at the end of this discussion, effectively, what you're going to be on the on the ask for is which three of these are the most compelling to pursue to help the financial viability of the city. And then we'll talk. Plus, I think you were first in.
Yeah, I I was just going to say, it's okay. Yes, agree with you. For me, it's I think what Mike said, we're just putting everything down because it's important to acknowledge that, yes, other cities, code enforcement might be why they're able to do what they're able to do because they go they have those mechanisms in place. That's we're not saying we're doing that we're co-signing on all these things for us to do. Right. So, yeah, I just I just wanted it listed here. So I understand. Same thing with my comment about residents. Obviously, for growth, we need people to come in here, right? But we should acknowledge like a core ten. Um, I just want to say they are already working on a study of bringing up the fines to what they or the cost, the fees, not fines. Yes, thank you. The fees to what they should be. So should that really be something we're voting on for the top three since they're already working on it?
Well, so I think you're going to have to determine that because the decision tonight is actually not we are making a decision to go forward on this. The decision is going to be which ones of these are we going to ask staff to come back with real information so that we can make a real decision. Because before you make a decision, you can't make a decision tonight. You don't know apples to apples, what impact these are going to have on the city. You don't know exactly what timeframe they're going to impact. We're just we're kind of waving our arms on what we think right now. So what I'm going to you're going to push at the end of this night is let's actually get some tangible information in front of you so you can make a decision. So that's what that's what we want to decide at the end, which ones to pursue. Okay, so here's my here's my.
Sorry, but you said what it could be the most impactful? Didn't annexation itself be one of those levers?
Right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at this seat over here. I really did. I was.
So so what I'd like to do is I'd like to go through each of these if there's, Brian? Oh, I'm sorry. I think it was behind John. Yeah.
Definitely do.
Yes, my challenge with voting on these is I think we're dealing with different buckets. You know, one bucket in my mind is the general fund issues, the fees, potential taxes or debt, the public private partnerships or interlocals or taxing districts and projects specifically.
So when we get to the voting part, let's talk about that and just make sure that we're that my ask is fair. I'm not beyond an unfair ask, but let's make sure it's fair. Okay, so let's very. So so because because we may have different beliefs or different knowledge about each of these, I want to go through very quickly and see if just do quick definition, quick groundwork of what this is. So existing taxes, I'm not sure we need to spend any time. Everybody everybody understands the leverage there, correct?
Yeah.
New taxes, there's a couple of things at play. And one of those is, I think, I think the utility tax, you're familiar, new taxing district. I know, Vince, you wanted to to say a couple of thoughts that you've been thinking about around that.
When we get there, are we there yet?
We're there.
And this doesn't apply. I have a few pages worth of dialogue regarding taxing districts and several different kinds. There's sales tax, there's there is property tax and other partnerships and different zones and you can set up. But I mean, the more I learn about the use of them, it's very limited. So perhaps I'll hold my piece a little bit. It's it's worth an option exclusively, in my opinion, to DRCC, agree the taxing district in that region. If that is something we really want to develop as a plan, I think the framework exists. I think the legislature passed language in 2023 that allows us to part out a district and create a metropolitan park district, facilities district, maybe even for a public workshop in there. It allows you to do that. And you can sales tax, you can do by vote of the council through property tax. And that, to me, was one of the levers that I would want to probably stress at the top of the list or at least have vetted by staff because I think it has the most economic viability to actually carry out that and potentially, you know, selling some bonds or, right, you know, those two are my top two. But taxing district in in that area for DRCC, if you really want to see it come to reality, I think that's probably tops of the list and and would be the most quickest to bring to to bear.
Right.
Wish I'd thought of this. Maybe we get to the next study session. I think what we need is what the city did in 2009. They put together what they called a strategic plan. My issue with it at the time was it wasn't a strategic plan. It's what we need now. What are our options for raising revenues? What could we get through doing A, B, and C? So that, you know, I I thought it was a horrible document because it's casual strategic plan or analysis of the financial options. We have some reason.
And that's what tonight is about, is to kind of get the groundwork laid and that type of.
So it may be helpful to dig that out and just have the part of the the packet for next meeting to see what was done over 15 years ago.
And under that vein, when we talk about different ideas, obviously, we can't jump in and have a study session on each of these tonight. That's what that's not what tonight is. It's effectively to go through and bring to the top of the list the ones that we think we should go analyze so that we can so that we can actually analyze what is the impact, what is the timing, how does it play out? And then and then you've got much more ratio conversation. I'm like, and then I'll come back.
So Councilor Duquesne is asking the question. So for instance, the metropolitan parks district is a thing that came a long time ago. We looked at that. You draw a district that's bigger than your city, and you get those folks to attribute property tax to a parks district. Then 2000, 1999, actually was, we were smaller. That's one way you do it. They also hear about people talk about transportation benefit districts. Again, you can define a district to be just your city, or you can be divided to be broader, that's based on money that goes towards the street fund. So there's other kinds of districts. The point is those don't districts don't always have to line up with your city boundaries. Make a case for them to be something different. I think that's what you're saying. The legislature did something recently, but it's existed for a long time.
And I have four or five pages of documentation here, right? I can go into all of it. And to me, for for DRCC, it just seemed in in that region, it just seemed to make the most sense if that and that and also, and again, by the way, there's there's some metropolitan park district, civic auditorium district, whatever. I mean, there's a thousand districts, and I think there's over 3,000 in Washington State currently according to MRSC. So it's not an uncommon use. It's a way to not only raise funds, but fund the projects in perpetuity as well. The other thing I I thought about was perhaps even using as one of our viability levers, advisory votes, seeing if they would support a bond measure. I think that is something I would be interested in betting what the cost would be, knowing what the cost would be for infrastructure down in sub area. And if you have an idea, like you were saying, a plan, a ballpark, let's bring it to the people. If they they would even support a bond measure, if they would support a 110 to 1%, I I think that's another angle to go. And and once you have the vote of the people, you've got a green light to to go ahead and.
We'll see you in a minute.
It works the other way, too. As the planners found out when they went to the public and they said no, and they went ahead and did it anyway.
It's a good point.
The baseball or the football?
No, you're right. It's baseball. Yeah, Safeco.
Talking about this, you're saying DRCC offers an opportunity for this? Are you, are you thinking there's a circle around DRCC and an area that expands out and that's a taxable district because they don't, DRCC has a benefit to that?
It, it depends on which kind of district you rely upon. There's all sorts of authorized by statute and each one of them has purposes they can.
They're just defined, uh, taxable districts for their criteria.
You define the district.
You find one that is.
Sometimes they're defined by sales tax.
Different mechanisms available for depending on what they're purpose.
And sales tax, just, just for conversation sake, has to be a vote of the people. It's not something a council or, or county can just simply impose, property tax.
But, but we can create a district where we impose a, a tax.
Vote of the people typically.
But you don't need to vote of the people for that? Or you do, the taxable district?
Uh, no, the new law, the new rules say that you don't. The new rules say that, uh, council, or council, or councils, or commissions can define a district. It puts a board of governors in place. And I would prefer a vote of the people, but, but there's been a lot of new rule changes, uh, since 2023.
You know, but the issue of the districts and being able to go outside of the boundaries of the city raises bigger issue that probably gets into the decisions we make on which levers to choose. But that's just, you know, equity is the right word, but there's a lot of discussion in the last budget discussion about the burden of the property tax of the property owners. So to me that warrants the third rail of Mill Creek politics, looking at the utility tax to get all those residents. We have what 49% of our city desires in multifamily housing that may not necessarily be paying property taxes, but could be paying utility tax.
They could be paying utility tax.
So it not just do we go outside of the boundaries of the city for a project specific improvement that may benefit more than Mill Creek residents? Do we, within our boundaries, we need to look at who we tax and how they tax them more to be more equitable.
What are the different differences between utility tax and taxable district? What are the differences between those two?
Well, utility tax would apply to all utilities on the city residents within our mill, in the city boundaries. The taxing dis, then those funds can be used for any purpose. It wouldn't be limited. Taxing district funds are going to be limited to the statutory, statutorily prescribed purpose of the district.
So, so as you can see too, just to make this a little bit, and I have them in your packet bucketed, but I am breaking things out here because they are different. So the, so you'll, you'll need to vote on the new taxing district separate from the utility tax. They're different. That we definitely need to go analyze them. Okay. So we've talked about the concept of a new tax, this tax district. We've talked about the utility tax. Um, there is the potential of other taxes. I think we can probably skip over that for now. Uh, operational cuts are on the table. Um, if that's something that you want to pursue, that would take staff to go, uh, you know, basically, uh, tell you what those would be.
Unless we agree to a baseline.
Unless there's a baseline. Correct.
Could be none. Also look at operational efficiencies, you know, cutting people, getting more from the staff we got by creating more fish instructors.
Good. And, uh, that would be guidance to Martin.
Yeah.
That his answer is I've been already looking at that.
Well, I would expect if there's some big swing, like let's just say, you know, people, um, renewing their passports online becomes like the hottest thing and we quit having people here except for the people that need those processed, that we would reevaluate that segment of our services, right? And rightsize it depending on what is happening. So I wouldn't vote for that because I expect it to start operating.
Somebody raised this earlier to Connie's point. There are, there are some of these that actually are in the flow of the operations. And as, and as a reasonable ask of what's the operational efficiency plan, there are others that are more stepwise that are, these are going to be things that we really want to go dig into. Um, and so I think the, I think the ones that are in the flow, um, I'm not sure they warrant, unless you think they're really big needle movers, they probably don't warrant your vote. Uh, they warrant an ask of what, you know, what are we doing? It's the stepwise ones that require some analysis.
I, you know, I've never known any business who wanted to grow that were cutting costs. I mean, there's a, there's, you can be efficient to some extent, but, um, I think what we look at more, in my opinion, is being more effective. Efficiency is okay, but I mean, you gotta be real careful about how much you cut and what you save on it. So go ahead.
The other thing, just to remind you, we're, we're living in a world where costs are going up. So to maintain a level of service that you have, you're already talking about a level of increases in, in revenues that's required. Try to offset that with efficiencies. So, um, then when you start talking about growth or adding things on, now you're talking about more significant. And that's why we're in this conversation is more, more stepwise improvements. That forward in the investment. Okay. Attraction of new businesses. Anybody want to put that forward? That's something that Jeff certainly has already shown, you know, showed, shared with you a business development plan. Uh, but is there something, uh, more significant around that that we should be stepping into? The information required.
If we consider this one, the information that could be required, could be looking at what I think is a major market leakage for the city. That visitor combination and how that connects to our sports tourism. Pointing out that traction, traction of new businesses, um, as we talk about soccer fields, ball fields, stuff like that. The opportunities for places, for people to stay within Mill Creek are rather limited. And every time there's an alternate, every time anyone wants to visit here, every time they're playing here, um, they go out to eat, they eat in town. So you don't have appropriate amount of visitor combination that, that's lost revenue in a lot of ways.
With Longhead Hotel envy.
Yes.
Okay. Next one, South Town Center. Um, you're pretty, you have a plan on that. You have an RFQ out, you're moving forward. There's an economic impact analysis. The one thing in, in that plan, the one thing that I would call out, um, I'd actually like to kind of know now what the ballpark is that we think this is going to do for the city, just in context of the conversation. So that's why I raised the issue that there, we don't have to wait for the economic impact analysis. This is, this is one where I would say let's do some modeling, you know, based on assumptions, what we think this is going to do.
So I put that in quotes because you said it before, uh, put a plan on paper, see what, you know, prepares that. And that would help me an awful lot, especially for the sub area. I, I'd certainly be willing, whatever it takes to just see what the, you know, the overview is, is the potential. And here's what we're looking at. Nothing firm, but.
In, in terms of the sub area, I would like to kind of set some expectations management a little bit. So recall, for whenever any development, any building is developed, it's typically, and if things are going exceptionally well, a two to three year process to go from application, item, getting shovel in the ground and getting it together to completion. That's if everything goes. So when we talk about opportunities that are created from the, uh, sub area, um, you know, just don't expect anything to be built by 2007, like 2027, right? Like it's, uh, in the absolute.
Early, it's five years out or.
Yeah. And that's in the absolute best.
Right.
Situation.
Perfect.
In order for this thing to get completed and once it starts being the development, it's going to require developer to have math, acquire all their properties to do the math thing. It's going to be some piecemeal development, but there's also a lot of externalities that we can't necessarily control. Like for example, um, is it going to be American timber or Canadian timber? And what is the cost of that lumber whenever the construction costs come in? Or what kind, where is the steel being sourced from? How are, there's a lot of things happening at the state and federal level that can have a pretty significant impact on the development environment. So just word of caution that when we talk about the, um, sub area, it's tremendous opportunities, very transformative for the city. But this is, um, I don't want to say a marathon, right? But it's not a sprint. It's more like a, you know, 800 meter replay, right? It's a little bit in between and kind of caution about how we approach that.
What I'm hearing you say is this is not going to help our short term.
Yeah.
It's going to help our long term.
Correct.
Growth diversity. So, yeah, like we know that. Yeah.
So, but, but I, but I think we, I think we knew that. But if we were to, if I saw a plan on paper that says, hey, look, five years from now, potential is X, um, I might be willing to, I might be swayed one way or the other on funding sources or funding resources or.
I think the big question on this.
If that exists.
Is, is, uh, at what level is this an needle mover for the city? And, and, and then in what timeframe? Does it hit in year five? Does it hit in, you know, damp to year seven? And that's the picture that, that I think is still.
Think of it as a back of the, I keep talking about back of the envelope, kind of thing. You say right now it has this amount of property tax, this amount of assessed value gets this property tax out of it. 30% of it turns into five story buildings that are one, four over one. And what's the property tax impact to that? And what's an assumption about there's 10 new restaurants that each gross 2 million bucks a year, gives you this much sales tax? They give you a number that says it's about this many million dollars. So you know that that's equivalent to three Lowe's stores or not. So it's kind of how do you compare things on this list? And I agree, at the back of the envelope, we could do pretty roughly right now, the sub area plan in a year is going to give you more specificity about that. But we could just say, let's make some rough assumptions so you know that this is a, a million or 10 million or 100 million, about 100 million.
And also, it's helpful, what I can do is where we, uh, once we get underway and we have the consultant selected, I can try to frontload some of the early economic analysis. So give us some ballpark scenarios of different development scenarios for, you know, for option one, option two, option three, option four. This is what the ballpark gets right to for. And then we can kind of, we, we can try to frontload some of that analysis a little too, just so that we're, you know, going into the situation armed with the, those are the right caliber. I think.
Okay.
I agree with South Town Center being a lever, but for the same reasons, I think DRCC is a lever. Cause I think, and if we make an investment in that, I think that's going to potentially attract people and our business and influence city. But I don't think we should be voting on either of them because we voted, we decided last week, I thought that those are priorities for us in the short term. We'll vote for both of those.
I think the big, I think the big missing thing on this one outside of what we talked about last week is this back of the envelope, which needs to happen regardless.
Well, and for the same reason, we're talking about DRCC and how, you know, what would be the revenue generation out years. Um, the same thing, you know, the utility tax option, you know, that's, um, you know, you said it's not like a property tax, but people that rent, their, their rent includes a portion of the property tax that the landowner has to pay. So, um, but people don't see it. They don't see the bill if they're living in an apartment. Um, can we classify it? Well, so there's a DRCC and we know that out year centric. Is there, you know, the annexation, we don't know enough about the annexation. Um, is it going to be a, a burden on the city or will it help? You know, we have no idea. I have no idea. Um, every other annexation study has halted because it was going to bankrupt the city. So, um, I guess I don't know enough about a few of these to even, I guess it could take.
So just as a reminder, that's exactly the point of this conversation. My, my guidance to use, you actually don't know enough about any of these. There, there, there are always, there's some more information about others, but tonight, what I think we have to decide is there's a handful of these that we should actually take action on and go get the information so that, so that we can bring it back and you can actually assess, does it help financial viability or not? And are we doing it or not?
And the ones we found it with, this is the right amount of information.
Exactly.
To get staff off doing tons of dollars with the work.
So the ones that we pick, those projects, check. As soon as we're done with this, I'm going to ask you to, to pick, pick, pick the ones you want to go pursue. Then we'll see which ones rise to the top. Then we're going to have a conversation, Connie, to that exact point. What is the information we need staff? So the staff actually is directed.
I think Connie hit on a point where we do need more information because that's the argument that's always made against the utility tax. And you're correct, a portion of it is paid through the rent. I pay 10,000 bucks a year and my property taxes for 3200 square feet home. I'm pretty certain that an apartment dweller is not paying a proportionate share of that amount as part of their rent. But they're not paying 2,000 bucks a year additional in rent. So, but I think it'd be helpful to get a ballpark information of how much is a renter actually paying? What share of the property taxes are they paying? Cause it's not, it's not apples to apples.
Which is why you look at things like utility taxes more of a per capita tax instead of a per property.
Okay. So let me put, let me push this forward because we've got a few that we need to get done and, or just like go through in 20 seconds. Do you have?
No, no, go.
Okay. Let's talk about annexation. So who wants, who wants to, um, propose the, the concept that, that, that we need to go get the information we need?
I'll, I'll go up on that one because I think it's one of our strongest opportunities, but I don't know enough about it. What I've heard is, um, I've never seen a study on annexation. I think that, that doesn't mean I haven't done, I haven't seen them. What I've heard a lot of is fears of annexation. There are a lot of fears of annexation about additional costs, street costs, uh, and where's the right place, where's the wrong place? Uh, I think it's time that we, we list a, a criteria of what we're, what is relevant to an annexation. But things like we're going to get increased sales tax in some places. Some annexations give us very little. Uh, we're going to have increased costs to the city. Where exactly are they? They street, are they services like police and, and how are they, you know, it, what are the, what are the criteria? So we have the criteria and then that criteria becomes, forget everybody else's opinion, we could go out and we analyze potential annexation based on these individual criteria. Not anybody's opinion, just these criteria. This potential annexation offers huge amounts of sales tax revenue, uh, also huge amounts of, of, of services, whatever it might be. But somebody can, uh, a smart, a consultant can provide that. If we have the detail, we can make a decision about annexation. If we don't have the details, we'll never make a decision about annexation. You know, have fears of it. I, I do think it could be the strongest lever we have available to us in our city.
In the annexation, there's a lot of discussion last week about Lindwood coming, Lindwood coming, Lindwood coming. Remember where they're coming. The area of our overlap and our move is our municipal urban growth areas is very small. They have to come just a little teeny bit over I five to get to the area that they've identified they may annex. For us to get the property Lindwood wants, we've got to go all the way to I five. So in my mind, a short term study that we could have and it wouldn't be done by staff would contract for it, is not talk about criteria, but is identify three potential annexations.
Based on what criteria?
No, not on any criteria. Just three potential annexations to study the financial impact. So we know before we get to criteria, I mean, if we're going to annex for reasons other than finances, that's a different conversation. But if, we don't need to get into criteria. We, what if we annex, annex everything that's I five? What the financial impact be? How many more police officers do need? Public works offices? What's the property tax generation? What if we went to the Northwest Quadrimal? What if we went south down where we looked 10 years ago, down towards the casino and 180th? I think we need to identify three or four annexation options and just look at the finances, the criteria of whether we decide to do it. That, that, that's going to be dictated, I think, by the finances.
So Brian, your proposal, the first step is to bear out financially, does this make sense or what's the picture?
I think.
I think he was driving by, where can we annex first? What's the impact of it?
No, doesn't make financial sense.
But are you saying let's target a?
No, let's identify some potential annexations to give us a sense of what the financial.
What are some potential annexation opportunities? What are some potential annexation opportunities?
So, you start there, right?
So, let me play this out, John, because I think you're actually a step ahead in terms of down to the decision. Where if I staged this, what I'm hearing is there's a first step that says, let's analyze a few areas just to know financially what it means. Is it really good for the city, really bad for the city? Is it short-term, is it long-term? But in those three, get a financial picture that allows us to then go forward in the conversation to say, now are we interested in this? And we can start to get to criteria and what do we want to do and where do we go? But that's what I'm hearing, Brian, is to play back.
Yes, because we look at, are we interested? Then with the decision after the financial analysis is, do we want to pursue one of them regardless of what the financial impact? There's some bigger picture goal we identified that says, we may lose money in the short term, but let's go ahead and do it anyway.
Yep.
I agree with what the mayor's saying because I think we need to look at our options. And for me, when I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking, I don't, like, there are different, there are different ways of, or different areas to annex them. And I don't know which one might pan out the best for us, or if any would pan out best for us. But like, for instance, is there an area that we would want to annex and it's mostly, mostly houses and structures that would not be needing much police service or anything like that that wouldn't cost that much, but then is still gonna bring in revenue? Or is there an area that we need that would be better that has more businesses that are coming in? So, to me, there's different scenarios which would play into the three different scenarios we're looking at, and we don't know. For me, I feel like I don't know without that information if this is a good financial decision for us or not. And I need that information to be a good, strong financial steward of the city and the city's money and making sure that we are looking at all alternatives before we go then and start asking them to pay more taxes.
And to both the mayor and Mayor Porten's points, it would have to make financial sense or otherwise, what would be the, why are we having this conversation? Are we annexing just to try to beat Linwood to the punch? Because we know, don't forget, we're going from east to west, so that means we get Martha Lake and all the problems that exist there. I'm just throwing this out here to take to that argument. Linwood would like to cross over I-5 and just get the retail segment short of that. So, is there a sweet spot there? I don't know. They go, I don't know. Costs a lot of money for infrastructure, everything.
And you won't know until.
And part of the reason I suggested that, in the few discussions we've had on annexation, I've not heard many people say, let's just do it for reasons other than finance.
I agree with that.
Driving, the finances is driving the decision-making. That's why I say, let's look at some financial options, scenarios before we get into the criteria.
I think saying the same thing, the difference, if I could offer this is, I want to make sure that we analyze these opportunities equally, equally, because some are gonna offer horrible expenses to our city. And some are gonna offer, that the same, those same pieces could offer significant revenue to our city more than surpassing what those costs are. So, I just want to make sure we look at them all the same way, all the same criteria.
Our task would be to identify three or four options. We want them to contract with a consultant to look at.
Based on what are we looking for? We're looking for revenue? And we're looking for development? We're looking for what?
No, I think it's just picking four areas, four conceivable areas to get a sense of proportion. And if we went east half mile and annexed residential areas out to the power line corridor east of Gold Creek, we had residential areas. What would that mean for?
We could just go, you know, four ways, east, west.
Yes.
North, south.
That's fine.
But make sure each one of those is evaluated the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
And we have our guiding principles on financial viability. Get lens going in.
There's benefits and negatives to each piece, but they should all be looked at on your tree.
They'd all be looked at the same.
Right. That's a hundred. Any other comments on annexation? Staff, anything you wanted to add or is that position?
Why is Mike smiling?
I know what the answer is, that's why. The trick, if you just annex and just annex it the way it is, it's a loser. Otherwise, otherwise, somebody else would have already grabbed it, right? It's a competitive world out there. You could just grab Walmart, just Walmart, not their parking lot, just Walmart.
Yeah.
That would be a good deal, but that doesn't work that way. So, that's part of it.
No, not unless you're.
The other reason I'm smiling is that right now, if we annex that area, many of those people would be glad to pay lower taxes with less tax rates. They're paying more dollars per thousand than we are. Now, our houses might be worth eight hundred thousand average at six hundred thousand. But tax, those people would get a tax rate decrease by annexing, so that's why I'm also smiling. There's a tax rate decision that's in here too. If you don't want to touch property tax rates, then don't annex that because it's gonna cost us even, the balance is getting even worse before the county's doing today. So.
I think we need to maybe look at the Muga also and, you know, are there developers that are going to want to come in, build huge tall apartment buildings? And we take on the load of, you know, our streets getting those extra people, stormwater getting the additional load. So, we are getting these expenses and then we never got the revenue, same with the development, same with all this additional work. So, could we strategically annex to say, hey, we think this is gonna bring some development? So, at least if we're gonna get all the bad side of things, revenue is. Or even say, this is what we want it to look like so that it's not happening.
Just as a reminder, we are not deciding on whether we should go in.
No, we decided not.
What we're gonna. Is this on the shortlist of something we need to go pursue? More information on the table.
I think the financial analysis will give us the baseline to have the conversation. Paul, Mike, and John have all been talking about, gives us the level playing field. Here's the baseline financial impact of the city. We did it. Now, are there other reasons why we would or would not decide to pursue any of them?
That kind of data, we could make a decision one way or the other, what was that data?
Would we have to, would we have to turn anything off to afford?
Financial analysis, there's plenty of consultants out there, we hire and we come in. Our task would be spending the time to identify three or four options for them to analyze.
We've already talked, I could give you three names. I mean, these are easy.
We had one with Econ Request that basically did this for EGO back in 2016.
Okay, we could push us forward to get us to a break. So, now we've got kind of a list of ones that were added. I'm not sure we need to go. So, new fee, increasing fees or new fee-based services. We talked a bit about anything that anybody would want to add on that. And increased population, this one's kind of embedded, to be honest, into other places. So, that one's, DRCC is a financial lever.
Well, you know, what somebody here said, that's gonna not be a revenue lever. And I anticipate, I don't think that's true. I think DRCC could be a civic center. Other cities are putting civic centers together that provide services to their citizens and they charge for them. Their rec program runs out of there, there, you know, we talked about those, you know, we're getting the elements of the thing which we're not trying not to, but the large room rentals that are not available anywhere, you know, in the area. But more importantly, you know, childcare services or whatever we want to call them, but there's all kinds. Before school program, I don't know. Yeah, little people take care of, but don't bring more than that. But anyway, there are revenue opportunities out of a civic center. And we could analyze some civic centers around us and, and I, maybe not around, maybe other cities, outside of even Washington State for a unique idea. There's revenue in a civic center, revenue to your city, not just a bunch of rooms that are free for anybody who wants to come down and sit in them. Revenue for your city.
Edmonds loses a million bucks a year.
No, that's their performing arts.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, you know what? There are civic centers, people probably aren't making money because they're poorly run, but there are a lot of them that are very well-run. And Edmonds is a unique example. They have way over expended their opportunities.
I remember when I was doing the benchmarking, the numbers are there. You can see, you know, what Wood was is doing, what Mucatillo is doing. You can see.
But it's not gonna tell you the true picture because the type of investment we're talking there, it's really the intangible. We're not gonna be able to identify how many businesses are gonna move in Phil Creek because of that.
That's right.
Or how many people come to our restaurants because we built a civic complex.
You don't know, but you want to, you can calculate the revenue that comes out of this.
Yeah, but that, I think that's gonna be a pretty minuscule amount.
You gotta look at it pretty clearly, you don't know. Hey, so.
But in our discussion last week, I don't think anyone was saying, let's do it only if it generates positive operating.
But some people under the impression that the civic center, no revenue.
So, let me bound.
It'd be expensive.
So, last week, so last week, we talked about, last week, we talked about DRCC as a community gather. And that has a whole set of actions around it. What we're doing by putting it on this list is saying, hold on, you want to look at it as an engine for financial viability.
Right.
And so, basically, if you're gonna put your vote here, what that says is, I want to go put some attention on studying it as an economic engine in addition to a community gather.
I just want to point out that in this analysis, right, that you look at impact. Impact doesn't only mean in the positive. Impact can also be in the negative.
Yes.
So, as you do, or if you're, if that's for actual impact on revenue, that could also be very much so. The finding is that it's actually at drag and depending on, you know, most models are, you know, there might be some good models or I'm just saying, it is further studied and further assessed. Just because we're studying revenue, sometimes.
Okay, there are two on this list that I want to, just quick, and then we'll take a break. Next one is the debt bond measure. I think we probably needed a little definition on what you're thinking.
So, there was conversations last week about taking City Hall and moving it to DRCC and potentially putting a facility over there and selling this to, there's a lot of components we talked about during taking, moving parts. Again, they all require, if we're gonna do it, they all require, so we've got the land already. Is that something that the public wants? So, that's why I brought up the advisory vote, that we maybe bring this out to the public and if they're willing to take on the debt. I mean, that's something we can start mapping that out next week if that's something that... Maybe not next week, but next year.
If it's focused on DRCC, one, that's an implementation strategy. But isn't that a really simple analysis? You make an assumption on what the total cost is gonna be, thirty million, thirty-five million. Quick analysis on what, if you took out X percent of that debt bond measure, what is your annual carry cost that you're gonna have to fund through the general?
Yeah.
That's not gonna, that doesn't take a lot of time.
If you're bounding it to DRCC, that's a great analysis.
So, I agree we need to do that, but that's easy.
That's why the taxing district made sense to me. I just threw debt on there. It's, again, if people want the Taj Mahal city, the middle of the road of Bond Lever Highway, then, then listen, you gotta have to pay for it and here's the cost.
Well, this gets to my point earlier, is it depends on which bucket we're talking about, because I definitely think we need to have some kind of analysis for those options for special projects. And what are the options for DRCC or transportation districts? What are the basic parameters? What could be included and that sort of thing? So, it's, again, I don't think that's a heavy analysis, that's just basic foundation on what is allowed and not allowed.
And just as a reminder, so, I agree, I think that's something within the DRCC stream of activities. The problem statement for tonight is to come up with the best ideas around the short-term and long-term financial liability. That's gonna be the lens that you have to look through, what do we, what do we need to dig into? Because we've got a lot of good ideas. We need to figure out three or four or five that we can actually go put some attention on and then let's get real information at the table.
Private partnership? Is everybody thinking that's just relevant to DRCC, the future of DRCC or?
It could be a sub-area too, everywhere.
It could be a sub-area.
We did a public-private partnership with a developer on how this site gets to be developed.
Land swap.
You're talking about this one here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay.
We don't know what it could be. It could be.
So, when we partner with a developer to, these properties, but do something for the city, that's private partnership. I sort of understand.
So, these are options in the vein of special projects. We could do this with DRCC. It could be done within the sub-area rather than being over our strategy. So, we would look in the DRCC planning path, we would certainly look. In the sub-area.
I'm gonna be asking for the short-term, for the long-term, for both?
It's gonna be for both. Because you have to solve both, that's what you said.
And where up there are the taxing options? Analysis of taxing options.
Who's taxing?
Feel these taxes? Bank capacity?
Oh, you just said.
I'm looking at this list over here.
So, we've got two pages.
Okay.
Of choices. Okay, so we've gone through the two pages of choices. You're not gonna believe this, but we're right on time. Is there any other discussion? Because basically what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give you a break. It's not so much of a break, because right when we come back from break, I'm actually gonna ask you for which are the three that each of you want to pursue. So, the break, you'll have to be thinking about it as you grab another sandwich. So, effectively, the question we're gonna come back to is to solve both the short-term and the long-term, because that's what you phrased, is it has to do both. The question again, just to make sure that we're on the same page, is not gonna be which of these do we go forward on? The question is, which of these do you feel like are the most compelling that we actually need to bring back information and/or plan so that we can? Really, what you're asking for is which of these do we really go out and study session on, get some information at the table so that you can make some determinations on how to go forward? I'm gonna ask you for three, if you will get three.
Right. So, DRCC, and you're voting on that as a revenue opportunity?
As a financial engine. We already talked about it as a community gathering and as a.
Just as a financial.
Just if you believe DRCC is a stronger financial engine than the others on the page, then that's what. Okay, so, let's take a break. We will start at the eight o'clock. So, you're twelve thirty. Uh, John, you good?
I'm ready to check.
You're talking to the agents now, are you? Thanks.
I already called it. Sorry, definitely.
We're there, baby.
I already.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute you, Sean, so.
I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to mute you, Sean, so.
Okay, is everybody ready?
Yep.
Okay, so the, so the objective of this next section is just, is to set up a repeatable pattern. We want to come up with what's the shortlist of ideas that we want to go pursue with information. If one idea doesn't pop up tonight, it doesn't mean that it doesn't get pursued, because you're going to continue this conversation. There may be things that come up. What I'm, what I'm compelling you to do here is start a process where you create loops that says, when you actually have something in front of you that you need to engage, call for the information. Get the information in front of you so that you can have a discussion, you have a study session to do it. And, and in some of these cases, rather than having the conversation linger, you can create tighter loops around bringing it to the table, I think John said it, than we design. It's something we pursue or don't pursue, and let's move forward, move to the next thing. So, so we don't have to be perfect tonight. We're, we're going to, we're basically going to decide which ones we want to move forward. Remember from our conversation, we said we've got to solve both short term and long term simultaneously. It's about filling the gas and getting stable, and it's about having a sustainable plan for how we go forward. And then we talked about, this is about meeting the financial obligations with that extra margin reserve to be able to invest. So that there's sustainability of operations and also you're maintaining that level of service and serving the community. So, and maintaining the ability to grow. So we talked through now almost a dozen areas, and the idea is each of you are going to pick three. I'm actually going to have you give them, I'm going to have you give them to me in one, two, three. I'm going to have council go first and staff then will. Sean, are you ready after the break?
Yes, sir.
Right, what are the three that you would want to pursue?
New taxes. Attraction of new businesses to Mill Creek.
Are those in order for you?
Yes, sir.
And when you say new taxes, was there, was it the taxing district, or was it utility tax, or some other tax, or was it general? Okay.
I have a question. Are we ranking, are we waiting these then?
I just want them in one, two, three. You don't have to give me like fifty, twenty points. Just one, two, three. But I do want them in order. Your priority.
Okay, because I think my question is, I'm like going back to our old retreat where they, like, a one had more points. And, and so. Yeah, so.
So if it's your number one, it's going to have more points.
Okay, but my concern is that we're looking at it doing that way, because I've been thinking about the way we've done that in the past. I want to make sure that something doesn't end up with more points, because it was, like, one or two people had that as their highest or something. And then we don't have four council members that had that as a priority, because it's not going to go anywhere. Okay, that's, okay, thank you. Perfect. I just want to make sure we don't end up with that.
I'll go next. Utility tax, new taxing district, and annexation, in that order.
So these books are utility tax?
A new taxing district second, and annexation third.
Okay, go next.
I'll go next. Annexation first. New fee-based services second. And the new taxes, plus utility tax, third.
Add it to utility tax? Okay.
Who wants to go next?
Um, I can go. I have first attraction of new businesses to Mill Creek. Second, annexation. And third, South Town Center as a destination for visitors. Number one is new fee-based services. Number two is annexation. And three is attraction of new businesses to Mill Creek.
Say my number one is a new taxing district. Number two would be attract new businesses to the city. And number three is South Town Zone, South Town Center.
Actually, I think it's just you, Brian.
Yeah. I'm still confused on the question. Are we, is this priorities or what we think are the best long solutions?
The ones that you want to go pursue for more information at the table.
Got it. I'm not going to put existing taxes on there, because I was thinking bank capacity, and I think we have all the information from the budget of what that option would provide. So I would put new taxes, primarily the utility tax. But completing the fee study, looking at new fee-based services. When we say annexation, I'm focused on the financial analysis we talked about. And the reason I voted for these three is, I just put a little map in front of me. These are the three that I, most, the annexation would be one, DRCC, South Town Center. Best case is not going to generate any increased revenues for us for probably five years. At best. And we've got an issue coming up in two and a half, so we may need to make this. You guys are going to need to make decisions sooner rather than later.
We'll call you.
That's why those are the options that I think decisions need to be made that can provide a bridge to that five, six, seven years when we start seeing some revenues from these other items. That's how I was looking, is why, why I selected the three ideas. DRCC, that analysis, I don't need anything more than what's already planned to be done. South Town Center, I don't need it, from my perspective, I don't need anything more than what I know is already going to be done with the analysis we've already given staff direction to do.
So just to play that back, these are just three we're talking about, and just one of the things I would really recommend, you know, of what Brian said, is that as you're getting information, this is actually an aggregated picture. Because these are all levers that fit together, and you have to be able to see, do you solve the short term problem and how, where is it coming from? And then where do some of these others pick up? And in that aggregated picture is where you'll, where you'll actually see the plan for finance. Okay, so let's play this back. So definitely. A circle around new taxes, Sean. Some attention around getting more information around attraction of new businesses. South Town, the South Town Center, the two that you voted, I'm hearing, I'm thinking that's for the back of the envelope analysis. Is that correct?
Isn't that something that's already, are we talking about additional work beyond what's already scoped? Brian, you provided a conversation last week that back of the napkin analysis is part of what we're getting, what we've already authorized and directed staff to do.
Perfect. So we'll talk more specifically then about when. Okay, great. Lots of attention on annexation. And then, and then some attention around new fee-based services. So very quickly, we came up with four areas. Staff, anything contrary or anything you feel like is missing that you add, that this is your chance to say, hey, council, respectfully, you may be missing something for votes? Is there anything that you think is missed in the four that we go pursue for information?
Those of us with failing eyesight, could you read the four again?
Uh, yes, so new taxes, and it's actually across the board around both new taxing district and utility tax. Analysis around the attraction of new businesses, which Jeff I know has started, but more information there. Back of the envelope analysis on South Town Center. Annexation is a big one. Annexation is a big one, takes out of the seven. And new fee-based services, um, as the, as the fourth.
The one modification I would suggest if I would kind of vote, instead of new fee-based services, thinking of new, I mean, as new services, I would like us to look at appropriate fees for services.
Just vote.
I don't, all right.
Everybody tell you're smart, Mike. Um, okay. Any other comments from staff? Martin, can you? Okay, so, um, Sean, any, uh, anything to add? Okay, so, um, so let's get a little bit more specific then, 'cause I want to be able to take, have staff be clear on the assignments coming out. Um, when we talk about new taxes, let's, let's talk specifically about what, what's the information that we feel like we need?
So, I, I just have a quick question of my fellow council members, because, well, what am I missing on annexation? Which, which direction, and I know we're going to get options, or we could, what am I, what am I missing? I know east, and I know south, it's filled out for the most part. And I'm just throwing this out there now, before we start picking and choosing the top two. And going west is, uh, I think to use the Public Works Director quote, is a loser. What, what am I missing that that's such a priority? I, I know, I just, I just wanted to throw that out there.
First part of the statement, the second word never happened. I, I want to start with new taxes. Before, before we get, so let's, let's start with new taxes, and we'll get, we'll get the annexation.
I think for a utility tax, we need to know, um, what our options are in terms of the rates, the range of rate, the estimated revenues it could generate. And related to that is the issue we talked about with Connie with the, the share of property tax. The information on the share of property tax is renters pay to their rent. I think that factors into the decision and discussions whether, from that equity perspective, we consider it utility tax.
Effectively, that'd be, let, let's figure out the economic impact of this, with the range of rates.
Yeah, what, if we, if we, if we had a 1% utility, well, first, what would the utility tax apply to? What's the range of bills that we cover, so everyone has a common understanding? Then we'd be able to understand, what would it be if we imposed, 'cause I understand we have a range of, what is it, 1 to 6%, 0 to 6%? So it's kind of like with the 1% property tax increase, what would a 1% utility tax increase? We have the ability to pick and choose which utilities it applies to. Um, what is our decision-making range with the utility tax?
How does it handle?
I'd be interested in, in each of the categories, but, um, on this one especially, just benchmarks within the county or surrounding cities.
Any other big, anything else big that we need to know?
I think the last one, since this is a, a group of things, is, um, although we've talked about utility, like the clean and safe as an example, just the feasibility of some of these other, other ideas around new, new taxes. The feasibility of implementing and, um, um, executing on it.
And one more element, um, you know, is it a council, councilmatic decision to do it? Or is it a, was it out to the people to make, to vote on whether or not they want? The other one.
Okay, great. So, so this is, this is basically an study session economic analysis, about what this, what this can do for us with different rates. Yeah, does that make sense? Okay, let's talk about the taxing district.
So the council one question on taxes, does debt fall into there? Looking at, or is this a basic understanding, if we took out quoted bonds for some general obligation bond, would we, would the carrying cost be per million? So we have a basic understanding of the debt option, that effectively being new tax. Problem?
Uh, yeah, what do you think?
Or is anyone else interested in seeing the basic information on what, on what the cost would be if dead?
I was, but I didn't make the cut, so I'm-
Oh, I, I, was it a separate, I didn't, was it a separate category of that? Oh, I, what? Okay, never, never, all complicated.
I think it's a pretty simple number to say, if you borrow a million bucks and you pay it back over 20 years, it costs you $500,000.
At some point, we're gonna want it.
Oh, and turn it back into a rate, but I mean, you could just, whatever, there's a, it is enough that you need to cover in your expenses.
Yeah.
And if you, now you pay it back from tax, it's still a number.
It has a really basic calculation. And then, never mind. I withdraw.
All right, uh, let's talk about the new taxing district, what you need to know.
Basic information, what are the options, and for each option, what is the scope? What are the allowed uses, what could we, what could they be used for?
Profitable boundaries, um, trying to think of what, what's different between this and the utility tax, you know?
I think this one, a taxing district, in my opinion, you now kind of shift the burden to the end user as, as blanketing the entire city with a utility tax. I think utility taxes also, don't forget, they're gonna boomerang, and every homeowner's gonna pay them too. So, um, this whole idea of equity with apartment, I, I mean, I get it. When you're on the campaign trail, you can't help but hear it, but, um, it, it, we'll end up paying them too. So it's not, it's not isolated, you're not gonna ship the burdens. It's, it's, uh, I think the taxing district has more merit, 'cause at least, at least you know, and you can forecast who's coming, what's coming in, what's not, and I guess you can do it with both, but-
But they're solving different problems, you can't use a taxing district to deal with their general fund.
Right, it's just specific to that region, you're right, absolutely right.
And apples and oranges, we could use the utility tax to fund a special project, but we can't use taxing district to fund general obligations.
So, so this one sounds like we need to start with a roundup. What is this, how does it use?
Taxing districts number one.
Yeah, I was thinking everything. When you're like, what do you need to know, everything. Sorry, you had your hand up.
No, it was, it was to say, this conversation you guys are having, that would be something I'd want. You know, once you look at all of it, you have that information saying which one seems to be, that's something else I'd need to know.
All those same things that we were saying, utility tax also, I want to remember.
And then one.
And are there different guidelines?
Yes.
For each of the 101, right?
Yeah.
What, you know, what is that?
Yeah.
Totally different guidelines.
Tax district.
Yeah.
And the, and the operational structure, for instance, a PFD is entirely different from its, has its own government, governing body from what a taxing district that we might, it depends, I guess it depends too, on what the corporate boundaries are in the taxing district, if it goes beyond our limits.
So these may be two slightly different study sessions, but it sounds like it may be worthwhile to do them together.
Well, utilities are just, I'm gonna have to sit down. Find all the operations rather than-
Right, yeah, they would be different.
What, what could they each be applied to, that, sort of the-
That's the benefit of having them together, right, so it's-
And, and this, and this is where, we're cognizant, there are some apples and oranges in here, and we're gonna have to stitch them all together. At the end of this, you're gonna have to pick, so bringing the information to the end of the next.
So, in the past, the word utility tax has been a landmine. That's, you step on it, you're disintegrated. I think if, if, if we are going to vet this fully, I think it's up to us to make the case, and really, advise the citizens that, that we've reached that crescendo of, there's just no more wiggle room, right? We, we've hit that spot, and so, while, I, I oppose utility taxes for, for a lot of reasons, but, but I mean, on one vote, worth costing outs, worth seeing what it would raise, and would it, would it, would it address that delta that's on the horizon? But-
We haven't decided to do it yet, we're just-
Right, 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 I'm just, I'm just saying, let's, let's just be aware of that, everything that comes with it, so.
Yeah, and this is right, we, we have to frame how we're discussing this, because we're looking at it, if you're gonna look at it and get information on it right now, then that may be fun. So we have to be cognizant of that, and make sure that we are giving out the information.
And to that point, we understand property taxes, we understand sales taxes, right? We understand all of our bank capacities, we don't know how to relate those options to these new options. So we want to have a study session, so that we can understand.
So, we have to do something to raise more revenue, because we didn't have the balance. Right.
I hear you doing here is, you have a vision, so a set of priorities for the city, and what, how, as financial steward, you're trying to stitch together the best combination of these tickles on that, so you go back to the community and say, this is, this is the best way to do this, so you can tell that story. So, this is, like, like you said, you're bringing the information to the table, you know some of the other ones. You could still stitch them together at the end, but this is, this gives you that information on all the levers, so that you can make a decision.
Remember when we brought up utility taxes and started the initial year of the stop? Mark Bond was sitting next to me, he made the comment that so many other cities have utility taxes. Um, we're, we're one of the rarities that we don't, and I was surprised by that. So, one of these information would, could be some information from other cities, impact on them, when they impose the utility tax, how the, the responses from that.
You can Google it and you'll find out, I did a couple, 131 cities that have utility tax in the state.
Almost had a warm batch.
That, that would be kind of a rarity, you know, are we really behind, are we behind the?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so in the ranking, by the way, without using the point system, this was, this, this had the second highest, uh, uh, gravity around it. So, the one that had the highest gravity was annexation, so we're gonna go back to that one now. So we had annexation, new fee-based services, annexation clearly had the most gravity around it. So, so let's, um, so let's spend a few minutes, Connie, good, I'm not helping you with your hand. Okay, so what do we need to know on annexation?
I think this goes back to what, um, the mayor was saying, because we need to understand the different direction, the different options, and how those type of options would actually affect us. Yes, how they can sound financially to know if it would be a good decision or not. And for me, this breaks down, good backing should be in a good financial steward who can, all our options. So, 'cause we don't know until we look at it.
Yeah, so like, move to the west, move to the south, move to the east.
Area wasn't rezoned, and there's not much developable land, so if people are shut, living there, they're already shopping and eating here, so we're not gonna give them the service that's available.
Uh, no, I, I wanted to look, I wanted to look. Have you listened to the silverloge?
It's like, uh-
The power line.
Yeah.
We're just talking about areas to look at, I'm just pointing out.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, actually, but that's why I think you were saying, what's not, and the people were like, oh, okay.
So my question for, um, annexation is actually on the people that we would annex? How much they are current, what, what taxes and what are they paying?
They're all in the county, in every direction?
Right, so, but I want that number to pass. Yeah, so, but I'd want like that breakdown, or like that information of what it is. But I mean, I'd say in the presentation, like, that, that's like the slide, as a reminder.
Because whenever I talk to anyone who's outside, they assume that, um, they, that, they don't want to be part of Mill Creek, 'cause we pay a lot more. That's the immediate what they're saying.
Yeah, they don't, yeah, they don't realize.
That it's all, it makes pond area, um, other side of, they all say the same thing, and so, just making sure we have a, a slide to describe whatever that truth is.
Yeah, to make sure it's a balanced pros and cons of each option, that's, some are gonna have some great negatives, and some are gonna have some great cons.
No, no, we, we, we're not getting into the analysis of the annexations, we're simply looking at the level point, doing a financial analysis, an equal financial analysis of each area we decide to look at.
Right, and I think I'm saying the same thing, pros and cons from a financial standpoint.
We're not looking at pros and cons, we're just looking at numbers.
You're, what are you looking, what do you mean?
You're making judgment, you're asking staff to make judgment.
John, are you saying pros and cons meaning positive and negative impacts?
Well, what, maybe I misunderstood, what do you, what do you want them to look at for each one of the areas?
I want them to bring us numbers, we're then gonna evaluate what, what we think are the pros and cons of these.
What kinds of numbers are they going to bring?
They're gonna bring what it's gonna generate in property tax revenues, what it's gonna bring in potential sales tax revenues, and what's the cost would be to provide services to that, and see if there's gonna be a net cost or the benefit.
Pros and cons, right? That's exactly what I'm asking for, same thing.
Same thing. Or that village.
It's your hat, yeah, same thing.
So, so basically, net positives and net negatives from a financial-
But we look at each, e- equally, so.
Adrian?
Um, I think we also understand that there's not gonna be immediate, um, revenue generated, so it's also, we should look at different timelines, at a different point of time, like, it's within two years, within five years, within 10 years, can we start seeing growth, so we don't get so scared if, if it's immediately right.
But is that a luxury we can afford at this stage of the game?
I think it might be, if we're looking financial viability and we're trying to solve the long hand, then it might. So I think that's a great point, that you're not just looking at it, uh, as one goal, but rather, is this gonna pay off as something? I see it as an investment, right? You're still going to invest something with an expected return, maybe five, 10 years from now.
Let's get that information, that we can, we can decide, right?
Are we willing, does it fit into the picture then?
So remember this stitching together concept, that you may say,
Once we see it.
Hey, utility tax solves the short-term. This annexation gets us long-term, and we're stitching together this. Those are just examples, whatever, whatever.
The return might just be getting us back on to the main goal, which is to be solvent and have a low in the bank.
Yeah.
First by, uh, what we just talked about here, what exactly do we want them to come back to us with? What information, we want to know, uh, potu, uh, potential property tax income? We want to know potential sales tax income, we want to know potential cost of development or-
I think there's an easy answer, there's plenty of annexations, people study, they could bring us back an example.
I'm just thinking, direct them to the, so in any- They know what they need to get.
Yeah, in any area, John, they'd be looking at, okay, here are all the revenue, you know, accretive things. They'll give you a list of what that impact is, and same on the cost.
No, 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 the fire hose doesn't hurt, go right ahead.
Okay, so this one seems pretty straightforward. Really, the key here is you're saying, let's go look at three or four areas, let's do a financial analysis on them, and then we know what we're dealing with.
There are really four, is that like dividing one of-
That's actually three.
What, what are the three you see, Connie?
Best of us to I-5. South of us to 180th. And east of us to the power line. That's the move.
To 180th. Like, oh, oh, sorry, I thought it was, there's differences.
Our move goes all the way down to 196.
So the third one is to 196.
Basically, they said our move is south.
South, so.
There's just no more. East to the power line, east to the power line, and change 180th to 196.
When you do your, so when you do your boundaries for this, we're gonna require, really, having neat boundary lines, and you can figure borders. And the problem with you kind of map out, it doesn't, it doesn't divide evenly or neatly. So there could be really, like, there could be four, actually. If north- It's, uh, large north road-
It's a large north road area, doesn't really connect well continuously. So, I'm just saying, there could be, I don't know, I'm sure we have to necessarily specify it, but when I work with the oral, we'll be able to neatly divide it in the...
Okay, so add a four at the question mark.
So, I want to get to the guidance. The staff is go assess three to four options. You've given them your intent. Let them come back with their expertise of what the...
I guess we could just easily define it as just a move. Divide the move up however we got it.
Is it reasonable?
Yeah.
Does it seem clear to you?
Staff, I understand, yeah.
Staff, is it clear?
Clear until it isn't.
Okay. So, then, duty-based services for existing facilities.
These schedules and...
Aren't there really two components to this, looking at what we charge for existing services, which is part of the study that I think is underway? And then, the second component is, are there services that we're not providing that we could provide that could generate revenues?
So, on the what we charge for existing services and opportunities, does everybody feel solid that that's already in place?
Existing services, I thought. I didn't know new opportunities was also.
That's not just this one. Is everybody confident that that one's in place?
Yes, but that's why I still voted for it because I want to see it. I want to acknowledge it's a priority, right? Does that make sense? Like, I knew, there was a moment where it was like, oh, it's already happening. We don't need to vote on it. But, no, because I want to make sure staff knows, like, that work that you're doing, we do want to see it before something else. So, that's why I voted for it. Right, I figured it was. But, I just want to acknowledge that it's you guys doing it.
Right, perfect. So, let's talk about new services. What is it that you want us to know?
Maybe benchmarking what other municipalities collect as a fee that we might not be collecting.
For existing services?
No, for new, are there things that other municipalities charge for that we aren't?
Provide that we're not providing.
That too, yeah.
So, basically, are we looking at anything? What else are you looking for here?
Do we want to have staff look at red light cameras?
No, we do not.
We need revenue.
Once a city has done this, it's all...
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the property tax by...
We have to go with red light cameras, but should look at it. It's one of our fiduciary responsibilities, not for it either, but we're already looking.
I thought we were looking.
What does it entail? What are we leaving on the table?
I think if we're looking at red light cams as a revenue source, that's incredibly...
I'm thinking it's a common safety discussion that my...
So, by the way, remember, this is not a conversation around what are all the things we could do to get to what you think the needle movers are. Let's not, staff's got a lot on their plate. Let's only send them off on the stuff that we think are the needle movers. Then, if we think we've missed something, we can send them back off for another analysis. But, let's keep focused on that. So, anything else besides there?
I know there was a discussion a while back. I don't know how much traction it's gained since as we talked about additional service beyond basic passport services, whether it was clear, whether it was some of the other services, international services that can be done at the city level nowadays. I know we had discussed it, bless you. Perhaps that's an avenue.
Adjacent to passport services or...
Yeah, it's, I can't think of the...
Pre-check, TSA Select and all of those.
Yeah, TSA, pre-check and all of those. Fortunately, they're now being operated under retail change. That's our challenge.
I thought Laurel looked at that. She did look at that.
We're going to bring in less revenue in time than we would spend if I respect the passport.
It was Jeff Ballantyne.
Check that out.
Pretty research. For short-term, we don't really have like good deals like that. A lot of them are pretty complicated.
It was like we'd make $2 instead of 30, and it would take over 15 minutes.
Good question. What about that we're not doing? So, just to go to a quick benchmark. Okay, great. Let's see, the last one. Attraction of new businesses and heathen citizens. So, beyond business development plan, what are you looking for here?
If I could suggest for something that might be helpful for attracting new businesses, I could look at our current land use regulations for their current zoning. And others we do allow. For example, car dealerships. Historically, it's been animoced towards car dealerships in the city. But, if we're talking about a type of land use, business that generates a significant amount of sales tax revenue, you know, a one or two, like says, lots might, it might be beneficial. I think in general, as of right now, in our zoning, we don't allow that type of land use at all. There could be other types of businesses once they go through with the finer kind. Finer to home, what we allow and don't allow, under what conditions. But, that is something that could be studied as far as attracting the business looking at. Not necessarily, how can we fill our current vacancies? But, really, what are we leaving off the table by our current...
And do we want to allow any of those that we're leaving off?
Right, right.
So, what I hear there is actually beyond car dealerships, it's a discussion around what are the big needle mover types of businesses? What would we have to do to have them here? And are we open to that?
I'm explaining to say, what are tax generate, retail tax generating businesses that are not allowed under our current zoning that we could consider allowing?
Like cannabis.
But, not that, well, we have a moratorium against that, though.
Can we have a moratorium on the hook?
Yes.
Moratorium, we do, some don't allow it.
We allow it. I mean, a moratorium, no, we didn't allow it. But, if you change that, they can change it different ways.
We just make our own, just have to go outside the city.
It's not an inconvenience to them because of the revenue.
And the crowd that goes along with it.
Well, if they're bringing it back into the city, they're still...
They're here.
Those crowds are our system.
They're a cash-only business that attracts...
Eighty-year-old lady getting her cookie.
Are there others?
If we annex, they'll just be part of the city anyway.
Exactly.
Anything else with that one? I had a different question.
Are you going somewhere else?
I am, yeah, that's why.
She's not going to the edible store.
Thanks for sharing. Are the big box in the same category here of what would it take to have a Costco or a Target or another big box that they create?
I think everybody's thinking part of it, it just doesn't happen.
In a current city, loans are...
They want to trade those and it doesn't happen.
It's always been fantasy here, but...
It doesn't happen.
So, it takes you back into the annexation.
I mean, just look at the farm. Or the Target.
Oh, that was a Julia Walmart. A Target kind of Walmart.
So, this is basically an assignment to Jeff. What big revenue generators could we have inside the borders and what would it take? That he phrased it, I'm clinging back.
But, I think this and also, I would love to see people just get calibrated as to what a store brings, whether it's a whole new thing like car dealers. But, I think there's been, fallacy in the past was, oh, if you've got bookstore is vacant, that's why we're short of money. And the answer is, there's not that much money that comes out of that. You need to know that if their revenue is $3 million, it gives you $30,000 bucks a year. It's not much money. So, people need to be calibrated that until you put five or those stores here, you have to. Doesn't make a dent.
But, $30,000 is almost a 1% property tax increase.
Also, if you just look at our property tax to see what businesses have been growing and growing and growing tax revenue, because that means they have capacity issues at restaurants. That's been a big, big tax go for us. And their capacity are issues in our restaurant, majority of restaurants. Getting in is difficult. If they're doing well, people like to eat out.
Hey, any other...
Buckets couldn't afford the rent increase.
Anything else in this assignment that you think is pertinent?
So, I've always been curious about existing areas, so sprouts, that business area, if it, in terms of attracting new businesses, it's not necessarily filling the slots that are there, but like, if that was all worn down and if something new was put there, what kind of, yeah, like a redevelopment to attract new businesses in the existing spaces? That's just a curiosity of mine. And I think it really comes through with the 135th and 132nd with the Rite Aid closing, right? And then, now it's a salon and a swim school. So, just what are the possibilities for spaces that we already have? Like, we know what our uses are, but what are other opportunities that of those types of new businesses? Right, like that could go in?
Yeah, I think it's kind of similar to the South Town Center. Remember, our comprehensive plan was to do that sub-area, then do gateways, then do east gateway. So, that's similar kinds of numbers, but you could look in the back of them and look kind of number and say, how much would that be?
Yeah.
Two years or whatever you're...
Yeah, is there something that we could attract?
Well, and I like the idea of going back to what we allow.
Yes, absolutely. And there's something to like an attraction of new businesses of, I don't know how helpful it is with financial viability conversation, but what are the needs of people who have home businesses? Be able to then grow or expand. The ones that are existing to have another space. What does that look like and how would that, how much should we be encouraging that? Because we would see the needle move on it or if it's not, you know?
Do we first have some information on whether those home-based businesses are generating any sales tax revenue for the city?
That's what I'm saying, I'm just curious about what is that?
Tiny number.
But, even...
It's a double tiny number, still a tiny number.
It is, absolutely. But, there's something...
I need to say, so, and again, I'll just keep reminding you, tonight's conversation is about financial viability, which means we're going to center in on the big needle movers. There may be other things that we want to take up, but tonight is about the needle. Let me go to Armina and then come back to you.
Guys, remember that when I show you the sales tax graph and I tell you that, you know, from all the different categories, these are what we're getting. And I also give you a second graph where I show you where the sales tax are being generated. Either within Mill Creek, we also get some from outside the city of Mill Creek. So, the businesses don't have to be in Mill Creek, but we just have to make sure our residents are shipping things to Mill Creek. That would generate more...
More tax.
More tax. So, maybe then, that might be another area in the annexation that if you do the annexation and everybody understands that if I shop online and I just make sure everything is shipped to my house in Mill Creek, they get sales back. As opposed to if it's in a new business here and if we have a new business here, if they ship out, we don't get it.
Yeah.
We should develop an online delivery application in TRC.
Set your new couch in Mill Creek and they'll truck it over to you.
Distribution center.
Amazon, Amazon, go. Jeff, I was going to ask, like, is there a way that we can find out the percentage, like, amount of businesses that, like, we have, you know, I don't know, 20% off restaurants and we have this retail, that kind of thing? What is, like, really generating or the most successful that's really working? Like, what's working in Mill Creek already of businesses that are generating that?
Directly, yeah, it's definitely possible. I'd have to get the account, I already know the services. What you're really looking for is like our retail market, like we... What you're looking for is what types of sectors are drawing regional interest? And then, what kind of, like, where are they, where are we not drawing? So, like, wherever you have a concentration of services, that means people are coming from... Yeah, pretty much, the way it works, you create your trade area and if you have more people coming into your trade area than your current population or market support, that means you're attracting people from outside the area and shopping. And that's usually how you measure what's going to be, what's successful or unsuccessful in terms of, that is definitely what we're doing.
Yeah, because even with the sub-area, that is like when you're going after businesses like, hey, we really need this type of business here because we know that there's going to be a need. Then, that's a good sell for the business. We have that analysis to get, you know, that people are using that type of service or product or whatever.
How would that be different than, I mean, a sales tax study which shows, you know, what percentage of, what's the top sales tax producer in our market? Restaurants, or we know we do really well with restaurants. Which ones are, they get smaller response, so it would give you an idea of different types of businesses.
Tell you what we're attracting now.
It's different in the, I guess it's different in terms of understanding your comparative, your competitive advantages with your peers and the surrounding...
Right, just tell you what you're doing, just tell you how that compares to your peers.
So, it'll tell you where, what do we have, what do we have a surplus of or what do we have a dirt of? So, it's a useful way of determining, like, how can you, like, for example, a good example is if you have three taco shops right next to each other, that's a good sign because that means it's a good spot to buy tacos. Whereas if you have one taco restaurant, there's nothing around, it's usually a bad sign because it's like, well, usually you're one attractable customer in one area. So, generally speaking, I'm butchering the concept, sorry.
No, but we like tacos, so that's what...
What this study will reveal to you is a little bit different from what Armina provides
in that this isn't necessarily talking dollars extent of what to be captured, not captured. It's more being, where are we drawing from regionally and where are we losing people to the region?
And you had your hand up, are you good now?
I just, maybe, do we want to tie to attracting new business? Do we want to tie debt in there? Investments in infrastructure in the sub-area? I mean, does $10 million get us X, get us new roads, get us new... I'm saying if we're going to contemplate all the what ifs for attracting new, should that be part of the equation?
There's a little bit of mixing here, too, because we've got South Town Center with a whole...
Right.
Added this, I think we have to assume that in South Town Center is going to be a strategy to bring them to that. This has been above and beyond that. What else can we do?
Did I hear that it wasn't Walmart that was planned going over there? It was the farmer.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that and that, the study was done that there is a, probably even more so now of population that would support that. But, there's something on...
So, went from Walmart to Target.
Target, but it's not...
Target during the recession decided not to build any regular stores.
That's right. So, is there...
Darby, the Walmart, Walmart, Target.
Walmart in 2004, that's with the county. We annexed in 2005, danced with them for a while. They finally decided to pull out, everyone, yeah, it's got Walmart. Then, we changed all the zoning so that, so nothing over 40,000 square feet could ever happen again. But, Walmart was a prospect. We said, well, maybe 80,000 square feet in a certain place would be okay. Then, some housing happened, then we tried Walmart on the other end with the elevator in the top. We tried lots of different things. Recession, optimism.
So, if you're talking about Carlos, talking about things that move the needle, Walmart's a moving needle.
Big dogs.
But, I don't know. It's investment from the investment standpoint, other opportunities to...
In the city, so it's meaning perhaps partnerships with... Other than just they have car dealerships, is that the models are changing of how you're going to operate? And you're starting to see a movement towards smaller venues or kind of sales floors, not big service.
I think moving more towards like how they are in Europe, where you actually, like, there's less...
Hold on, let's not go too...
Sorry.
Get in the weeds.
Sorry, get in the weeds. We can take that conversation all the time.
I'll just say this in my own opinion, but I think it's valid. Things like Walmart and Carlos could actually hurt our brand. We've been talking about Mill Creek brand for years and years now. We've been talking about Mill Creek brand for, for years and years now. I think those type of use, that's why the citizens voted, you know, sent out petitions against Walmart.
We're getting in the weeds.
No, I know, I know, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Identify the uses that we don't allow, so then we can have a study session and have these conversations. And we'll, uh, do we want to change or this, no?
Okay, are we, are we good on this one?
You're right, but another discussion.
Okay, so here's what basically, uh, captured for with a, a little bit of an add-on. What I'd like to do is let's, let's capture all those on one page so that we can see, uh, cause basically what I have is a template for all the actions you've identified for two thousand twenty five. So it'll be able to let us in the closing minutes, do a gut check on, does this feel right? As, as, and staff then can gut check with us of, do we have the capacity to do it? So Leah, can you bring the slides back up for me? Sean, just so you know, you're going to go behind the screen for just a second, but Leah, maybe watch. Uh, if you raise your hand.
Yeah.
Oh, he's back.
You're back.
You're back, Sean.
We're just making sure he's still, still there.
Thank you.
And you're back, it's like your hands did it, it's like you like. And I didn't have.
So, uh, we're gonna go to the end here. So in your packet, I have a slide that looks like this, which basically captures the, um, is there, can you, something happened where? I just want to be in normal, non-screen. Uh, yeah, not, not meditation. Okay, so we're gonna add on to the financial viability, the first area that we, um, identified with annexation. That is clarify three to four option to, uh, financial analysis. And we've got all the backdrop, but this is just going to be the shorthand. Uh, the second one was a new tax conversation.
Jeff, Jeff, just hold it.
So basically we want to step, um, to tax district. Uh, and on this week, we have one-on-one. What it is, how it works, what we get out of it. We have a separate on utility tax. One-on-one, um, financial analysis. Ranges. Feasibility. Decision-making for work, basically what, what can we do versus. Ebay services, yes, we're going there next.
Let me know when you're done, but before you move off, financial liability, I want to touch on one more.
Okay, so on the fee-based services. Effectively, I want to benchmark other cities.
My life speed.
Basically, what are we missing? Great. Those are the four, correct? And then, uh, we identified South Town Center, um, let's get it back in that envelope and Alex.
Can I chat in real quick? The one thing we didn't discuss that might, we might add to this list is after the budget discussions, we talked about having a study session on the financial policies. And bringing us back to where we started tonight, I think it's important because Connie made the comment that we didn't have a balanced budget, which is incorrect. We had a balanced budget under our policies and I want to make sure that in the study session, we're all in agreement. What I was proposing with the language that I provided, we'd be changing the definition of a finance, balanced budget under a financial policy. We only had a balanced budget because we use our general fund reserves to balance it. So to make sure everyone's understanding that that's what we were talking.
Uh, we all understand it, but, but, but she's right too, technically, we didn't, if we didn't do the transfer.
No, no, no. It has nothing to do with the transfers. It has to do with, we use the general fund reserve.
That's the way it's perceived though.
Yes, it's the way, yes, but the point being is we're already planning to have a study session that I think relates to the financial viability is how do we need to change our policies to promote financial liability in the long term?
Comment, comment.
No, they're, they're both right.
That's thirty six.
It's all just for a second, sorry. So basically, uh, financial policy review.
Correct.
So I think we have, uh, without editing, Sean, you can see those okay? Perfect. Uh, okay, so this is basically in the two nights and what we have on the plate. Says for South Town Center, uh, in twenty twenty five, we need to engage the consultant, get the master plan going, gauge legislators to keep them, uh, prep, prime them, analyze the potential city hall move. And investigate a potential proposed office. For DRCC, we need to assess the developability of this city hall property. Decide what to do on the seventies property, then effectively come up with the two to three options. What, what is, what is DRCC going to be? Four elements of function of design and, uh, let you assess, let you basically talk about to finally get resolution on, on, on what that's going to be. Then on financial viability, which is a reminder, you all pretty much said is the top priority for this year. We have a good list here of things that we would basically direct staff to get information back to the table. Number one, annexation. That there would be, let's go clarify three to four options, do the financial analysis. Basically, you know what those are, um, come back with, uh, so information that you can talk about exactly what the financial impact. Number two, go do a one-on-one, one-on-one study session on new tax district. What it is, how it works, what we get out of it, um, basically all the parameters of understanding. Third, similar on utility tax, do a financial analysis on utility tax with ranges, uh, feasibility, uh, decision-making, what you can do and effectively what the city. Fourth is fee-based services, so that's finalize the fee study first and foremost. And then second, basically go figure out what are we missing? Analysis of neighboring cities. We're missing anything. South Town Center, finish the back of the envelope analysis, uh, just so you have a range of what we're talking about. Do some analysis on attraction of new businesses, this is a continuation of Jeff's work, uh, but includes the big, bad, large retail tax generating businesses to see what's possible there. And then finally, uh, bring forward a financial policy review. That feel like an accurate reflection of what we talked about of the things that are, um, important to get done in twenty twenty five. And that sounds good to you.
Give you a thumbs up.
That's a reply, so you.
Yep, I think so.
Yeah, looks good. It would be, um, helpful to know, like, what would be coming back to us when?
Yeah. I have two questions follow-up to that. Was that good, Brian? John?
Uh, question on our three to five-year strategies, if that, we talked about this last, last week. Couple of these we weren't going to talk about, just going to focus on, you know, the other ones, but what is the plan on talking about clarifying, uh, being city standards for well-maintained outdoors public spaces, fine, and number five, we've seen a community engagement. Are we tabling those for twenty twenty five, twenty six, or?
So my understanding, Martin is on well-maintained, you're preparing a study session to talk about projects.
Uh, not necessarily, I thought we could do that on both of them. Or we could bring forward kind of maybe the plan. I think the plan was to bring forward, kind of, the council, then they give our facilities, or five moving forward. We could, we could do that as well.
Because they're operational.
Yeah, they're more operational and, uh.
I just wanted to bring that up, yeah. So more, more information on.
Yeah, the execution of those two.
Tom, with this, with that, is this, is this less a structure for you?
Right.
Uh, Sean, is this, uh, looking good to you? Sean gave a thumbs up.
Yeah.
You can see him.
Yes, sir.
So, um, so there are two questions then to, to close out the night. One is the timing question that Connie is raising, is there an ordering of these? And this is where staff has to weigh in in terms of what will be done when. The second is, I also want a staff gut check of what's on the plate here and is this all doable in twenty twenty five? Have we broken any capacity, uh, in terms of, uh, on the plate? So let's talk about the timing first.
Is that really a question that they can answer tonight? Don't they need to take this back and digest it and talk as a leadership team?
So let's answer that one first, Martin, how do you want, how do you want to handle?
I was gonna say the same thing, I think we need to bring it back and, you know, one of the discussions, we'll come back. Maybe based on what you prioritize today, in terms of, that's something that's feasible in that order maybe.
Well, you, you need to look at it in light of the long-term calendar, you already have them, the things that need to get done and how it fits into that.
Yeah, so.
But what do you get back to us about? Clear review.
We could probably come back if we want. Two weeks, three weeks, we'll have to talk about it in terms of.
Yeah, yeah, but like maybe February.
Yeah, I mean, we have a lot.
Yeah, yeah, there's trips and things like that.
We can come back next week and tell you maybe, and we'll come back.
Yeah.
I don't want to promise anything.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, thank you.
But the longer, it's a longer tap with like, I think it's still, I shouldn't have said that. But, uh, but I think it's feasible, uh, it's just a matter of again, how we stage it.
I mean, there's certain things like obviously with the financial viability, there'll be ones that'll be like more heavily research-based, the utility tax, the district. But the fee-based services, I mean, uh, if something you've been working on already, or, you know, there's certain, you, you telling us what makes sense of where it is in the pipeline, like, we would understand, just more knowing that it's coming up.
If I think that's a question, if this is bigger than you thought, and it's not doable, we prioritize, you know.
He said it's shorter than I thought.
Oh, he said it's shorter than you thought? I thought he said it's more than that. I understood that.
I think it's longer than. He said it's longer.
I think that is a valid question. In the financial viability column, um, is there a prioritization? Are there things that are more important to you, that focuses on? Back over others.
Thank you, Sean, just looking at these, I think that DRCC is one in terms of staging. DRCC wants really hinges on a lot of ideas and concepts that are going to be explored by some of these financial liabilities. So we, conversation stuff on tax districts, stuff like patients, stuff like, you know, new taxes. A lot of this kind of really ties into, um, I feel like the years, it would be better if it was staged to be happening after we've done some of the financial. And I'm thinking.
So there's a yin and yang of both and in that. I think staff does need to come back with what they think the right ordering is, these things and the timing of that, to Jeff's point. I would like a window for council to give to staff guidance on are any of these more urgent than others? In terms of what, like their attention, because they're probably not all equal. Where do you want the initial?
Have the fee study to you guys, or at least the contract mid-February to March. And we're going to be working on the annexation shortly too.
Bet sooner than I expected.
Yeah, me too. Um, and it will be done, but it'll, it'll be in March.
Good with that.
What was the timing for the annexation?
He just mentioned my top two, she's really on.
So then that kind of leaves the financial or the, the taxing district and the.
Businesses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The way to pay for everything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, she's got new fee-based services and stuff about that.
I think so, then you just, you said, just what I heard you say is that you just wanted a, a study session one-on-one on the two again.
Yeah.
Got it pretty easy to do because we have the materials for that, we just need to.
Get your way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. But maybe that would be a good thing in March-ish.
I mean, I, I don't think we were holding a gun to anybody's head here that it had to be done by next week. So I mean, uh, I'm okay with it taking a little bit longer if we can bet everything that we're asking.
Yeah. No, 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 yes, I, uh, my comment, and I don't, I guess this is more for the council members, um, if, when, like that, I really appreciate Armina's comment about like, that's something that's a one-on-one we can do. I would like when we check off, like, one of these items, we then don't immediately replace it with like the next step for that item. You know, I'd like it to be like, okay, that, we're good there. Enough of that one, we, we all acknowledge that we're like, there is more info next, but before they go to that one, there's another bullet point that we already said we wanted them to focus on. So like, it's just what I wanted to do, gut check with the other council members.
But if we rather, if we, we don't prioritize today, why don't we bring together what we think could be, uh, how we stage it, right?
Yeah.
Then we're just randomly picking things up and waiting for it to start.
Yeah, I think, I think it's really important that we move through the financial viability items so as soon as we can, right?
Yeah.
Because we have, we have a problem that we're going to fall off the cliff and we have to solve for it.
Yeah.
But, but not to overwhelm you guys, you know, like, what's reasonable?
Well, that's what Sean, yeah.
Just on the, um, I, uh, Armina had talked about having the, the one-on-one. I would hope that we would also be able to include in that the benchmark of what other cities are doing in Snohomish County and surrounding cities.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's already, already more, that's a, yeah.
In the amalgamation of what's on staff's kind of, uh, path right now, plus these things, um, still, staff, you'll need Martin uh, come back with, here's our recommended staging and path of deliverables, just, uh, as the loop back.
I have our own studies.
Can we join that one? Family goodness.
Fight or track, like a check-in, order these, yes, we've done this.
Yeah.
So that, you know.
Where we are. Yeah, that's very helpful because technically the top of this is, you know, it's, it's, um, it's our, it's our council priorities, right? So we should be responsible enough to like keep up, and you guys want to do some, so if you're helping us track that, that's great.
Yeah, my expectation would just have a plan and a schedule played out by month, not even like the week it's coming back. Yeah, my expectation would just have a plan and a schedule played out by months, not even like so weak it's coming back, but you know, like the whole month.
So that the goal was to basically look across the three priorities, narrow in the guidance to staff. I think you've done that. Now there's, there's a loopback. There's a final loop of what can be done when and what's the staging. But Martin will be back in a few weeks with that. And then really, to Connie's point, it's now you're just in a plan. Now reiterate the end state of this. Think you've reached success. All see the stitching of the different things, whether they get you through the short-term problem and with long-term viability. That, that's the, to me, that would be success is you could. I had the waterfall of we know this much is coming from this. And now we all feel confident that we know exactly what's pulling together the financial viability picture of the city. We all a lot more solid ground. Okay, great work. Any closing comments? Martin, maybe let's start with you.
We have 20 minutes. I'm going to, I'm going to bring. Up to 20 minutes.
I think. I appreciate you waiting just for a vision. Our priorities. Plan that we established or reviewed, haven't really confirmed yet, and I think they provide. We're very close to actually landing, I think, where we need to be in terms of. The tasks that we need to perform to hopefully get us to the point where we want to be. Still a lot of unknown, of course, in terms of what our capacity is. That's what a little worries to me, but I think we'll get there. I think to start, as we start to weave things in, start to work on our upports, work plan that we're staging out, we'll get a better sense of kind of. We have enough resources to achieve a council. As long as we're flexible going forward, to the point where we can actually confirm if we can do this. That would support this number of projects over this period of time. That's why I'm looking forward to getting to that point where we can. Commit, fully commit something. But it could be a little worse. During that you have that staffing and the money and the time to look things forward because again, we deal with things on everyday basis. You don't realize how much time it gives humanity fundamentally, how we have to do every single day takes time. Unexpectedly, for, you know, work on emergency. They're unexpected, just. We're trying to keep that, the capacity there also, and I think that's something we need to be conscious of is it's ongoing things to go along with, I think. But I think we have a good team here that. Always productive, that I think we can get a lot of things done. I don't have, I don't have no fear of that. I'm confident that we will get a lot of things done as a team together. Hopefully everyone, I was also open to adjustments and having may need resources, maybe not. There will be times where. You know, this is a dynamic process, working on projects, ours flexibility, building. Hopefully, adjust the capacity for what is part-time, permanent, good type resources or consultants, moving forward. But when we get to that point, we'll, we'll be transparent, we'll, we, you know, what we can do internally to try to, I think, create. So I am fully aware of. That's where we're at, but. Yeah, I think when we're ready to go, just getting to that point of matching resources with. Sorry, it took so long, but.
I'm glad we had 20 minutes.
Yeah, of course.
One of the things I'd guide all of you to is in this process, if you get capacity conversations, that seems very rarely a go. Conversation is simply a prioritization. So just stop and give staff guidance on this is more important than this, because this is the bigger deal.
Right.
Have that dialogue and stay glued together. You're actually going to solve a lot of staff's issues with, because staff will always try to execute everything you've told them to do. So you have to give them guidance from time to time, and actually, we think this is a bigger needle mover go here, so that, so that they can be efficient.
On that speaks to the importance of us understanding how all of them, you know, the capacity issue. One project, one hot project comes in and it diverts, you know, three people for a month, you know, understanding with that stage, what the effect is on the rest of the staging. You know, just being aware and understanding it is all I ask.
One thing I do see is in, but the list, I mean, that the list is feasible, but there will be some trade-offs probably coming this year. Again, a lot of things that we have planned. Hopefully not on the CIP, maybe on a lot of the internal administrative. What we had in terms of system development, like, yeah, I just, I don't know. Well, it's something that staff will internally discuss. Because this is going to probably take. It's going to take a little more time than I expected, which is fine. It's just a matter of dealing with the trade-offs. But we'll, we'll keep you. Opened on kind of where we are to go along this journey.
So one thing, just to remember, there is a Northwest dynamic, which is more so than any other place in the country, where we have difficulty with trade-off discussions. And we like to just stack stuff on the plate.
Northwest night.
Northwest night. So what Martin and staff really need is conscious of that. And, and, and when you get to those conversations. Be willing to take something off the plate that's not a big needle mover or just stages down the road for something that is a big needle. That's just the trade-off, because you're constantly moving stuff around. And the more you can do that effectively, you're constantly reprioritizing the stuff that's critical path and then more than you can perfect, so.
I would also say that, let's just say they dig into one of these things and they think, well, you know, there's a few different pieces of data that would be more valuable for, for us to learn from, you know, like. We made a list, but that's, you know. We need you all to help us make sure that's the right stuff.
Okay, any closing thoughts from the council? Mayor, Mayor Pertem will come to you last. Any closing thoughts?
So just for you, Rob, I think you've done a fantastic job of. Solidating seven opinions, staff opinions, probably another 10 more. Seven personalities of any others that are in the room here and creating a living, breathing document. You've done a great job, so I just wanted to take a moment and thank you for your services provided here at the city.
My pleasure.
You've done a great job. You deserve recognition.
I appreciate that. Any other closing thoughts from council members? Frank, Mayor Pertem, any closing thoughts?
I just want to say that I think it's been really helpful and thank you for guiding us through this because I feel like now we've dug in and we've done a lot of work together. And now we do have a framework of what we need to make some important decisions. So I think that, that's been really helpful to get us through this. So thank you.
This is the fourth year in a row of Dennis. I think this is probably the most productive from my perspective.
Agreed, agreed.
Hope you guys will continue doing them next year. I don't know that I'll be sitting back with Barb back there.
Will be. You'll miss us.
Regardless, you'll be here doing it. But Vince kind of stole my thunder. I want to thank you, Rob, and first the staff for putting everything together. I think the setup is better than we've done before and for the food and everything and having us prepared. But Rob, we made the right decision. We hired you to do our strategic plan and no knock on our prior facilitator, but having your knowledge, involvement with the strategic plan really facilitated and made this as productive a discussion as it was, as Vince said. So thank you for all you've done. It's been helpful. You're keeping us moving forward and we're not running in shame. Yeah, I think it was good. I hope you guys do this again next year, but we still have 11 months to go.
So I'm sure, Rob, you should do this for a living. You're really good at it.
So if there's nothing further, let me check. 9:20, we'll adjourn the meeting if we have nothing further on our agenda.